Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, June 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held by remote location. Call to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place.
This conference will now be recorded.
This meeting, the town council, is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post the record of this meeting on the town's website at www.ci.southbridgeMA.us as soon as we are able. A reminder that a roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. At this time, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and liberty of all. Thank you. Roll call, Mayor Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo. Counselor Manah.
Absent.
Present. Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Eight members present, one add. Item 3A, considering except the town council minutes of Monday, May 18th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Steves, second by Counselor Nash. Do I have any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd like to point to Counselors Forum. I'm trying to get to the section right now. Where my comments are such that the references made to grants, when in fact, I'd prefer that it reflects the statement that I had made, which is in regards to grant assurances. As you'll recall, I was speaking specifically about grant assurances that are tied to many of the grants related to the airport. So perhaps that could be reworded just to add in grant assurances.
Okay, Counselor Nash, I think where you have, he encouraged people to sit through seminars on grants and grant assurances. Would that help?
I think that would be perfectly fine. Thank you. I didn't actually come up with anything before this. Just noted it. Appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll update that.
Mary, do you have that? Okay, so it would be sit through seminars on grants and grant assurances and what they are actually committed to when they accept grants. Does that sound correct, Counselor Nash? You good with that?
Yes, I am.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Roll call to accept those minutes as amended.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Manah. Yes. Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 3B, considering except the special town council minutes of Thursday, May 28th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nash, second by Counselor Steves. Any errors, corrections, or omissions on that one? Counselor Nash, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of notes on the vote tallies. If I caught them all, they would have been items four, five, six, seven, and eight. Should all tally at eight, or six to two rather than the stated eight to two? Not sure how that happened, but.
Yep, okay.
Four, five, six, seven, and eight all show tallies of eight to two when it should be six to two for each. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have that, Mary?
Yep, I'll update it.
Okay. Anybody else? I think with that as well, if you go back to the first vote, the amendment, vote in favor Katrona Marquetti, counsel's opposed, it should be by two to six vote, motion fails, not six to two because it's the opposite way. Okay, Mary? I believe that's the way it should be recorded.
Okay.
Counselor Steves is shaking his head. On the very first vote on the amendment by roll call, councils in favor of Katrona Marquetti, council opposed, Adams, Daniel, yada, yada. By six to two, the motion fails. It should be by two to six vote, the motion fails. Because it's two in favor, six opposed, so it should be a six vote. Anything further? Seeing none. Roll call as amended.
Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Manah.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
And Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Considering except the special town council minutes of Monday, June 1st, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Counselor Daniel moved, Counselor Manah second. Any errors, corrections, or omissions on that one? Any? Okay, quick scan. I see none. Roll call.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Manah.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
And Counselor Katrona.
Yes.
Thank you. Item four and five, I apologize, I totally missed the formatting on this when I reviewed it. So it should be, item four should be subcommittee reports. So I'll go general government, counsel, Steves.
I haven't had any meetings lately. I don't have one scheduled, although I, did you get the email that I sent you regarding doing a council of the whole for the home host community agreements?
Yes, and if you're in agreement with that, that will go forward, we'll schedule that up.
Okay.
So I will be scheduling a general government, well, a committee of the whole, actually specials town council meeting, because there'll be three separate host agreements. So that's three items to discuss, three separate host community agreements. I'll coordinate that with the town manager's office and Eric so that they can notify the parties. So we'll get that scheduled up. Department of Public Works, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. No meetings have been held, though none are formally scheduled, and we'll reach out to schedule one for addressing outstanding meeting minutes, including the subcommittee budget meeting for which I have yet to see draft. I understand that those are being transcribed, so I'd like to get those taken up and cleared up and approved sooner rather than later. No other report. Thank you.
Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counselor Lazo is not here. Don't believe there's any meeting scheduled. Planted Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have no P and D meetings since last time we met. I have one scheduled for 15th of June at 6:00 PM remotely. That should be going out this week to the citizen members and the counselors as well.
Thank you. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have no meetings scheduled. We do have items on the agenda tonight that I just asked to put on the council meeting instead of going through a subcommittee. I have no meetings planned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairs, for all the work throughout the year. I just want to make reference to, while we're on the subcommittee reports and reviewing town council rules and regulations, one of the rules and regulations is that all subcommittees shall make a written report of activity under their jurisdiction. The report is to be turned into the chairperson before the next organizational meeting and will be used in the annual town report. So if we could get quick summaries of your subcommittees, of your activities within the last year pursuant to that is rule four of town council rules and regulations, if you want to reference that. Special Committee Reports, Curbside Advisory Committee, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met last week finishing up the presentation and the memorandum. Received something from Mr. Pelletier today talking about transfer stations. We'll be finishing up very shortly for the new town council that'll be arriving next month and possibly new town manager, well, Kamaga. So we'll let whoever the chair is at that point in time make that decision. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager, Search Committee, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Posting closed late last week, we had 28 candidates that finally sent in resumes and the committee is beginning the process of reviewing the resumes and cutting it down to a number for us to interview and then another number for the council to interview furthermore. Thank you.
Thank you. COVID-19 Public Health and Safety Briefing, just briefly, and then I'll turn it over, I believe Chief Woodson's on the line here with us today. And Mr. Pelletier's here as well if he wants to echo any comments as well. The Emergency Operations Center met today. We are scaling back the number of meetings that we have. And with that, Chief Woodson, do you want to, as incident commander, offer any words?
Sure, if I could, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. A lot of you have already heard this this morning at the EOC, but as of May 31st, our department's pretty much went back to normal operations. We, so far, have had no people, none of our police officers or civilian staff have tested positive for COVID-19. I think I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, we did have a police officer who had parents test positive and they live with the officer, so we're very concerned about that, but so far, so good. I think Andy will probably touch on the homeless tent on Main Street, but that has been taken down. Dr. Holland did a fantastic job with that, so that's no longer needed. I guess it can be put back up as needed, but as of now, it's not. Over the weekend, just so you are aware of a few things in the community, we had to call in a SWAT team. I know it's not a good word right now for a lot of people, but we had a person barricaded in a home armed, threatening to harm themselves and family. Fortunately for us, one of our police officers was able to talk the person out after about an hour standoff prior to having to use any SWAT operators. So that was a good thing. We also had a suspicious device located on Main Street. It looked like a pipe bomb. Man, I looked at it and I thought it was, but it was not. Fell off the back of a truck, we think. It wasn't placed there by anybody. It wasn't a hoax device or anything like that. It's just a strange thing. It landed in a strange location and with everything going on right now, we just weren't sure. So we had the state police bomb squad come in. Once they told us it was safe, we recovered the item and we realized exactly it was nothing. Our police officers have been at rallies or protests in Sturbridge and Webster over the weekend. Everything was okay. No real issues to report on that. Tomorrow, we have one at 2:00 and Sturbridge and Webster will be returning the favor and sending some assets our way. So next EOC meeting, I believe, is two weeks from today. And like the council chairman had said, we're not, you know, winding it down completely, but we're going every other week. And I think if things keep trending in the downward direction, we'll go to once a month, but stay tuned for that.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Pelletier, do you have anything to add?
Good morning. Well, good evening. Town of Southbridge is setting at 128 cases as of the report yesterday. I think we went to 131 today. We have seven deaths in the town. Of that 131, there are still, I believe, 51 active cases. I'm trying to remember from this afternoon. The homeless shelter on Main Street did indeed take down the tent. We got an inspection down there between Alicia and my building inspector and my health inspector. The conditions look really sanitary. It looks like they cleaned it up nice. So again, kudos to Dr. Holland. He pulled off a major coup for the town, something I think was necessary. The, I know Paul's not on, but he reported earlier today that the Center of Hope facility, I don't believe, ever had even a single guest. So that was optimistic for us. Beyond that, we're holding steady. We're not following Massachusetts trend of going down, but we're not going up either. We're averaging one to three a day, which has been what we've been doing right along since late, well, mid-April. So any other questions or concerns? I'm up.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Pelletier at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Chairman's announcements. Just a reminder to the town and the public, tomorrow is election day. Make sure you bring a mask with you to the polling place. The polling place will be open normal hours. Best practices are in place by the town clerk. We got that brief earlier today. Those, yeah, so just be safe when you go out and vote, but please exercise your right to vote. It's an important election with, you know, several races on the ballot. We'll be voting at least two new counselors just because I'd like to thank Council Mayor and Counselor Nash for their work. I know we'll have more meetings on that, but, you know, they are not going to run again, so we'll have two new faces come July 1st. So important for the public to get out there and vote and continue the mission of improvements in the town. As I had mentioned previous meetings, we were still trying to get Commissioner Riley from the Mission of Education here to the town to meet with the town council and the school committee. I received a text from Senator Fatman over the weekend that stated that Commissioner Riley is still planning on being present for that meeting, however, they're going to turn it into a Zoom meeting with all the participants, town council, and school committee. That's all the details I have, but it will be on June 19th. I don't have a time or any other information. Senator Fatman is facilitating that meeting, and as soon as he gets that information over to us, I'll make sure to push that out, but please save June 19th as a potential date for that meeting. I will also ask, because we will have the results of the election, that the commissioner includes not only the sitting counselors and school committee members, but any new electees to both boards because they will be part of the continuing mission to improve the school. I think that's all I have for right now because we do have a lengthy agenda with 45 items. So I'll turn this over to the town manager. The town manager?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of announcements. The first one is from Charter Communications, Dear Minister of the Official, on or around June 2nd, 2020, Spectrum MI Plan Latino will be adding 13 new English channels to the new Spectrum MI Plan Latino package. The new package will include Spectrum, TV Basic, Latino View, and Spectrum MI Plan Latino with the addition of the following networks. Animal Planet, Bet, Boomerang, FXX, MTV National Geographic, Nick Jr., Nickelodeon, Oxygen, Paramount, Sci-Fi Land, and VH1. The additional English channels will be added to customers purchasing Spectrum MI Plan Latino. On around July 10th, 2020, additional Spanish networks, Ola TV, English Para Tacos, and Kids Central will be added to Latino View. Teremaya is scheduled to be added to Latino View at a later date, and details will follow. The additional Spanish channels will be added to Spectrum MI Plan Latino and Legacy MI Plan Latino customers. In Mosin Latino located in Latino View is rebranded to Telehead Urbano. A logo change is also scheduled to occur in May. For a complete channel lineup, visit www.spectrum.com/channels. If you have any questions about this change, please feel free to contact me at 774-243 or via email at johnmayor@charter.com. Another announcement, a legal notice. Notice is hereby given that a community outreach meeting for a proposed marijuana establishment is scheduled for June 16, 2020 at 6:00 PM at 208 Worcester Street, Southbridge, Massachusetts, 01550. Community outreach meeting will be held outside in the parking lot in accordance with social distancing guidelines. The meeting will be held rain or shine. The proposed marijuana establishment will be an adult-use marijuana retail establishment to be located at 208 Worcester Street, Southbridge, Massachusetts. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak. Those are the two announcements. I just want to let citizens know, and we put it on their website and we put it on Facebook today. Town Hall is going to be open to the public Monday through Thursday evening this week, but by appointment only. So if you would like to come in and meet with somebody at Town Hall, please call the department that you'd like to meet with. They will meet you at the side door, walk in with you, do business, and then escort you out. Please wear a mask. Masks are required if you come into Town Hall. We are doing a phased approach. Next week, we're hoping to open to the public in a general, more general way, but this is our first opportunity to provide services. We do want to encourage you, if you don't have to come into Town Hall, please don't. Use mail, use the drop-off box, use the telephone. We're really trying to limit the amount of people coming into the building as we slowly reopen with the state of Massachusetts. But again, if you do it, if you come to Town Hall and you don't have an appointment, you could try calling from the parking lot, but that doesn't guarantee you'll be able to come in right away. So please try to call in advance before coming. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Strawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the town manager. The town manager mentioned the Town Hall being open Monday through Thursday. What is Friday? Is that a day off for everyone?
Friday, we're going to continue to do the deep cleaning with more and more people going to be coming into the building. We need to make sure that the cleaning meets the state requirement. So we're going to continue for at least a couple more Fridays to do the deep cleaning on Friday.
So town employees have the day off?
As I've been telling you all along, Mr. Katrona, employees that can't work from home are working from home.
On Friday.
From home. They've been doing that for Thursdays and Fridays for weeks.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager. The handicap ramp in the back, is that closed off or are we going to be keeping ADA compliance with this?
So Heather is working on it. There's a hole, they found a hole in the ramp, so she's doing some patchwork. I saw it closed today. I didn't talk to her today, but I suspect she's going to come and fix that patch and it'll be reopened, or patch and then reopen it.
Is there, is there a contingency plan in the meantime, if you're going to be open and be able to let?
Yeah, we can, we can let people come up in now if we want to. It's certainly a small hole, David, but I think she's closed it for patching. But if we have a person that comes in, we can get them up. It's not a big deal. The hole's not stopping anybody. So we can, we can use it. It's not closed in that respect, but until she, while she's doing a patch, I'd like to keep people out today.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, just two quick questions. Well, one combined question. So what's going on with the other town buildings? Community Center, Library?
So the library will not be opening until July. The library has a whole different set of cleaning requirements, and as you know, books come and go out, people come in. So they will, the plan right now, I think, is for July, either 6th or 8th, Counselor Steves, to open. Even that will be on a limited basis. Community Center will be the last building that doesn't open till Phase 4. Obviously, the seniors are our most vulnerable group. So the library has been working with area libraries, they're trying to kind of open as a group so that one library opens, they don't want to rush people to come into our library or one of the libraries that opens. So they're working as a unit, Sturbridge, Charlton, and Southbridge to try to open and plan things together at the same time. Pat is talking to the community centers all around the area. That's a whole different ballgame because we really don't have break seating for that. We are talking about using the gymnasium in there for certain programs to separate people. Pat, again, is looking at that, but under the governor's plan, it can't open till Phase 4 anyway.
Thanks.
Anything further questions for the town manager? Seeing none. Presentation swearing in, we have none this evening. Item 8, citizens forum. We do have a citizens forum posted. Is there anyone out there that wishes to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, we've had this the last couple of weeks, so I'm going to continue to have this on the meeting because it is part of trying to be transparent and open government. Anybody else? Anyone in the audience online? Seeing none. Item 9, vote to accept a donation from Joseph Dow of the veterans of, to the veterans of foreign war memorials currently located at 219 Everett Street to be placed by the trustees, soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen memorials board in appropriate location. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counselor Adams, second by Counselor Daniel, Mr. Town Manager.
As some of you may be aware, there's a couple of memorials right in front of the old VFW. Counselor Adams, I believe, has been working with Joe Dow to get Joe Dow to donate him to the town. I know that Counselor Adams has some ideas for where they may be going. I think there's, I think they're going to first be stored at DPW if I'm correct, but I'll let Counselor Adams discuss this more. But I want to thank Mr. Dow for his donation. I think it's great and they should go to a more appropriate location than in front of what now is kind of a bar entertainment venue. Counselor, through the Counselor Adams.
I can add, but I know Counselor Manah had a question first, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So this is really nice that he's doing this, but shouldn't there be an amount on there? Because, I mean, there should be a dollar amount for, I think that's how families accepted donations before, was with a dollar amount on it. So I'm just, I don't know if this is the appropriate way to accept it or not.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Manager. You as a chairman officer?
Yeah, these are both actually stone or I'm not sure exactly what the materials. It's like a stone monuments. There's, there's no dollar value really to these. I think it's more meaningful, it's to recognize veterans and stuff, but I don't think, we don't have any dollar amount, but I think it's completely appropriate to accept the donation and what the physical object is.
Okay, so if I can follow up on that, maybe we should perhaps have somewhere in there that it's a, it's a monument, just so we can recognize that. I think that would be more appropriate. I don't know who's.
So.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Just a comment, there's nothing in the wording to vote the donation that mentions it's a monument, but that's in fact, I believe it's two monuments actually that are going to be accepted. So if you want to change that in the wording, it would just make it more detailed as to what's going on.
I believe that we're going to be voting on that. I mean, it's really important, especially to recognize Mr. Dow and his donation, and we're voting on this appropriately too. So, I mean, donation, well, what kind of donation? We should recognize that.
Thank you, Counselor Manah. I believe in his memo, it does reference monuments, so if you want to take a friendly amendment, add foreign war memorial monuments to that. Would that be okay with you?
Wish that would be fine.
Okay. Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I guess a question through you to either Dave or Ron. I'm just curious, even though I know Mr. Dow bought that property, weren't those monuments actually owned by the VFW? Were those part of the actual sale of the property?
I.
Counselor Adams?
This is General through you, so I can clear up a couple of things. First of all, the Counselor Steves, they were, but they also now belong to the International Club. They no longer belong to the VFW. When they did the contract, all that stuff was, belonged to that piece of property that belonged to that piece of property that was sitting on top of it. Um myself and uh Mr. Dow had been talking by over a year, actually since he bought it, um trying to work on removing those two monuments slowly but surely to do it. He's been very cooperative. Every time I've talked to him about it and uh i- he's been great working with uh to get those monuments. Um he's even offered to use a flatbed too to help out the DPW to move those things as well, so but I'll let that work through Heather and, and that process. Does that answer your question, Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I think it does, thanks.
Okay, uh to Counselor Manna's point, she's correct, that's, they are two monuments. Dollar value, I can go into a very long history with you or anybody else of what I received as far as financial. Uh with the old VFW, um it fit into like one folder and um that's a shame when we received it, so as far as a value amount, um I could not tell you, nor do I have the paperwork. And it, it was, it was some choice word, if I give you some choice words, it, it was those words um when we received it, so I apologize for not getting a dollar amount. That, that's something that I probably should have looked into myself, but uh um it, it was pretty bad.
Mr. Chair, if I may follow up to um through you to Counselor Adams, it wasn't um the dollar amount, it, it was the it was donation that I was questioning. Was it a dollar? What, was it a check, you know, um towards that? Or was it something else? And um the town manager cleared that up, saying that it was a monument. So I believe that, I was looking to see how much it cost. I, I, I was curious if it was a dollar amount, it should be in there, we should be voting on like the cash donation or a check donation. That's all.
And, and Mr. Chair, uh you're correct, it should have been um i- it, it been there, yeah, the um I think the letter stated that they were monuments, but it didn't come into the agenda items as monuments, so um there we can clarify that if we need to, to clarify it, so. Hey, just to, just to Mr. Chair, I just want to throw out there, I've been working with the DPW as well, it's possibly how we're going to move these monuments and where they're going to go, because within the town um that are in the same boat. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um if it's okay with everybody, I'm just going to add two things to this uh amendment uh to amend it. Right, so that we read, vote to accept a donation from Joseph Dow of two veterans of foreign war memorial monument currently located at two nineteen Everett Street. Uh is that okay with the people that moved this question and seconded that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Nash, did you have anything you wanted to add? I see you're like me.
Thank you. I, I was going to move for an amendment for maybe a formality, but the way that it was read and moved, Mr. Chairman, it incorporated to instead of of ahead of the veterans. And what's more, it could, it would only be fair to correctly name the uh specified committee, which is, Dave will have to step in because it's referenced several different ways on the town website. The trustees of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen, correct? I'd like to get it correct, please. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll add the of and then trustees of. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Uh roll call as amended.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item ten, vote to accept a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation in the amount of five thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars for the purpose, purchase of S A Y weather equipment for the Southbridge Municipal Airport. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Counselor Dan, second by Counselor Steves, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, you, well, receiving your packet of standard M- mast dot standard contract form for the airport for the purchase of this equipment. I'm not sure what the equipment is, I think, Ron Pluff, if you'd like an explanation of the specific equipment, please carry, answer that question.
Sure. Ron, I, I'm new to you, so go ahead.
Okay, uh, uh currently uh pilots who are looking for weather information have to get their weather from Worcester. And the weather between Worcester and Southbridge at times is different. So for example, if, if uh Worcester is telling them to be landing on runway two zero, they may come to Southbridge and find that it's just the opposite. So actually, there's a little safety issue there too, where you could have two airplanes trying to land together in opposite directions. Uh this weather station uh will report current wind, wind speed, direction, gusts, temperature, dew point, and also um altimeter. So the pilot can uh with his microphone and his airplane, can access the system by pressing his button on his mic four times. It can also be accessed through a website. If he's on the ground, say that he's in uh Boston and he wants to come to Southbridge and he's doing his uh 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 flight plan, he can access through uh the website and it'll give the current weather for Southbridge.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, or Mr. Pluff? Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Ron. Thank you for another grant uh to improve our airport.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, vote to accept a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the amount of six thousand dollars for targeted enforcement for pedestrian and bicycle safety. Clear motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Manna, moved. Counselor Adams second. Um, Mr. Town Manager wants to go to the chief on this?
Yeah, it's a grant, another standard grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety Security for and pedestrian safety, and the chief can explain it.
Okay, Chief Woodson?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh so this is about a, it's a six thousand dollar grant, five thousand dollars of it's for enforcement, pedestrian uh failure to stop in crosswalks, things of that nature, thousand of it's purchase helmets for children in our community, to ensure that they're um wearing helmets when they're riding bikes. This is an annual grant. We apply for this every year and we have gotten it you know, probably for the last ten or eleven years and so, it's a grant again through the state so we can aggressively enforce these violations and it's a minimal cost to the town.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um thank you, Chief Woodson, for this. This is a clinical grant. Um a question for you, though, I, do you still require that um bicycles be registered in Southbridge? I know that was a thing a long time ago, I guess we're growing up, but I just
Believe it or not, Counselor Manna, we do. It is a requirement that you have to, your bike registered, you also have that helmet on, so we, we enforce that when we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just point out that the, the state standard contract form has referred on page one near the top to an incorrect email address for Karen Harnoy. Uh the email reads treasurer at town of Southampton, so um hopefully that doesn't hold up any correspondence that she'd need to repeat. Thank you. I never saw it.
We, we will get it. We'll be taking care of it.
Yeah. Okay. Anything further? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
And Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Item twelve, vote to accept the process for approval request for expansion of outdoor table service to comply with Governor and Charles Baker's June first order clarifying the progression of the Commonwealth's phased workplace reopening plan and authorizing certain reopening preparations at phase two workplaces. Clear motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Counselor Manna, second by Counselor Steves, Mr. Town Manager.
Uh thank you. Uh as you know, uh the state of Massachusetts is slowly reopening a variety of different businesses. Uh restaurants are obviously clamoring to reopen. This is a plan uh to help restaurants uh open with outside seating. Uh this is uh specific requirements that Andy, in part of health, have been working on uh to prepare to let restaurants know exactly what they have to do to be able to uh do this, and I know a number of restaurants are waiting for this. Now refer to Mr. Pelletier for further detail.
Andy?
Good evening, how are you? Um I'm going to start with an apology, but, but pushing this through so quick. Um this was signed by the governor on the first. We did not receive it until Tuesday late on the second. Um I called together the building inspector, my health inspector, my food inspector, and the planner um early on the third, and we launched this thing. On the third, we managed to get it on the planning board's agenda to waive the requirements of chapter forty-eight, which is a site assignment requirement, um making it easier for this council to hopefully pave a way for the businesses to get back on their feet a little bit. But um the planning board magnanimously waived the requirements for site plan approvals and special permits on a temporary basis until November first, no later than November first. So what I put before you in the governor's order number thirty-five, section four, the order number thirty-five outlines how these restaurants can get up and running with outdoor seating. Section four on page six of the addendum one, attachment eight says that there has to be a process approved by prior to such approval, the mayor, select board. Chief executive, as established by charter or special act, shall establish a process for approving such requests. So in order for us to move forward, we had to have this board vote on a, a process. So the first two pages of the document are basically define the ways that a, a restaurant or eatery can get outdoor seating and also limitations on that. And then attachment B is some of the guidance that we will, or some of the checklist that we'll be checking when we get these applications. So I put it before the board, uh before the council. Um hopefully you had the chance to review it. I'm sorry, there's about ten pages. But um I put it before the council, these were the things that we thought were critical for consideration in the uh, in the approval process.
Okay, thank you. Questions? I'll go with Counselor Katrona first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To Andy, is there an application fee for some of the things that they have to go through, the reviewable? The review and approval by the Police Department and Liquor Licensing Board, and the second to that question is how expedient, how quickly can these go through the, the different departments?
The intention of this was to keep it as containerized as we can, if you will, so that we can move them fast. We got an application from Elm Cafe today and my intention is, based on the vote of this board tonight, um of the council tonight, I plan to have a meeting tomorrow and move their application forward. Uh the goal here is to minimize the wait time to hopefully get some of these businesses back up and running and get some monies back flowing through the town of Southbridge. I am not going to require a fee on my end of this. Um I cannot imagine, and Shane can speak to this, I cannot imagine the police will require a uh review if there's alcohol involved, I mean, uh fee if alcohol's involved. I'm not sure if the alcohol board can waive their fees and I, I, I haven't, I haven't confirmed with them if they will or not, but short of alcohol, I can tell you there won't be a fee for this review.
That's good to hear. Thank you. I'm awesome.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Dana, did you have your hand up? I didn't know if I saw that go up. No. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh through you to the uh inspections director, uh Andy. I tried looking, but I can't spend a lot of time digging into these things. There's reference, I think it's on page two of our attachment to five twenty-one C M R Architectural Access Board. I assume that it referred to part twenty-one, which refers to restaurants, but what exactly is the requirement that we're calling out there?
Yeah. If they open, they say, we, we talked about it a few minutes ago about the ramp. Anywhere where a perfectly physically complete, and I don't want to say that a, a um access challenged person is incomplete, they have their challenges, but definitely have more of a man than I am. Um but the uh, we have to make sure that if these things are open to me and you, that they're open to everybody. So um perfect example would be the Elm Cafe, which everybody's familiar with, if they chose to set up on the upper parking lot above the garage, um we measured the ramps there. They can't do that because the ramps are too steep for accessibility. So we just want to make sure the requirements of accessibility stay met and that everybody can partake of these opportunities.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, if I could continue, um unless there are other questions, I'll just point to um again on page two, uh near the bottom of the script. Um paragraph reads, town council of the town of Southbridge in recognizing it is in the best interest of the town of Southbridge to assist the citizens in establishing a new normal, quote unquote, to the municipality and to restore commerce and trade, but do so in a manner that protects the safety and health of our community hereby adopts this policy. I, I just want to refer to that because I appreciate the effort that people put in to uh making good accommodations and developing some sort of process that can be before us, but this seems just it's too wordy. I, I don't like it. Um I'm not one that subscribes to this whole notion of new normal because I think it's meaningless. Um I'm all for uh following the process that's laid out, but I don't subscribe to this particular paragraph and I'd like to see it amended to read the town council of the town of Southbridge. Hereby adopts this policy and leave it at that. Everything else is, is perfectly fine. I realize that there's um, there's a need to take these steps, but if it's something that's coming before the town of Southbridge, town council, we're making this proclamation and as the agenda item had read and as we moved, this is the process, so I don't think we need that additional language. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I agree with Counselor Nash on that. I don't um, I, I don't like the word, the new norm in there. And the new normal, but we have guidelines, it can't go past November first, twenty twenty, so I, I think taking that out and just leaving it simple uh is good enough because, yeah. I um I'm in total agreement with Counselor Nash on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, for Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I'm questioning through you to Andy. Um uh assuming that this works well, uh which I hope it would, but if we start seeing a spike in cases, what, how are you going to approach it with these, with these restaurants?
Um as with any step forward in phase two, if we see a spike in cases and we think that it's attributable to some action that we took in phase two, we're going to try to take a step back from that action. Um town hall is gonna, we're going to attempt to open town hall partially. If we see a spike in cases, I will be approaching the town manager, discussing it, and taking a step backwards until we get it in control.
And do you have an idea of how you would end up reaching out to the uh, the restaurants and so forth? Would, let's say, for example, they've already opened, they've been open for, I don't know, say, three or four weeks at this point. And then all of a sudden, they start seeing these issues, but they haven't, say, their restaurant hasn't personally seen these issues. But there's a spike in general. How does, how do you adjust that?
How, this is a really in-depth part of our job. We do case tracking. So one of the things we're probably going to require of these, of these restaurants applications is that they keep track of who shows up there. So if we see a spike related to, say, five people who showed up at a restaurant, all end up with coronavirus. Um we're going to look to the situation at that particular restaurant, see if there's similar situation at other restaurants, and we're either going to take action on that one restaurant to correct issues, or if we think that there's a threat townwide, we'll, we'll take the action on all the restaurants where the threat exists. So we could end up taking a step back and closing down the outdoor restaurants. We're hoping by adequate protection, by adequate safeties put in place, that we're not going to see this spike.
And I certainly hope that too. I'm just curious, just scanning through it, and it is a really long document, so I didn't read every single word of it, but does it actually specifically state that they're going to be required to um to keep a list of the clients that have been there and for how, and how long will they have to hold on to it?
Um hadn't even thought about how long they have to hold on to it. I will probably, since the governor put a November first deadline on this, then I will probably ask them to hold on to it until two weeks past on November first, fourteen days past that November first deadline.
Counselor? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Now, I'm not a big fan on tracking because I believe that's like an invasion of privacy. Um so are you tracking at the grocery stores?
We are not. We are tracking at the town hall.
That was just a, that was just a question. And um two hundred people are allowed in the grocery stores, correct?
Um it depends on the occupancy of the grocery store.
And we're not doing any tracking on the grocery stores?
Correct.
Okay, but we're tracking all the small businesses. And I just want to make that clear, that you know what? If we're going to be tracking these small businesses, then we need to be tracking the grocery stores too.
Just for the sake of clarity, the grocery stores were declared a essential business right from the beginning?
I'm not done. Okay, so again, because people have to eat, you know, we need to buy groceries, we need to buy food. But, you know, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm not But, you know, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm not a fan of anything that has come down from the state or anything locally for the closures and how we're reopening. And I'm not a fan when I get to go to Walmart or I get to go to Big Y, right? And I see the signs, no more than two hundred people in here at a time, you know? But we can't have a gathering of ten people. And I, I'm just, I'm just not a fan of that. And I, I went to get my car washed and they had to take my license plate number down, my phone number down. You know, they, they took my name down and everything. At car wash, at the car wash. My car was being stolen. I ju, I just don't get it. And I, I think it's an invasion of privacy. And that's all, that's my feelings on it. I'm going to support this for the small businesses, of course, because they've been closed way too long. You know, or, or they just haven't been getting the business that they, they, they used to get. But I'm not the fan of tracking. And I, I just think it's an invasion of my privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just for the record, uh, Kim Ferrin has noted via chat, the Southbridge Liquor License Board does not charge any fees for any applications, so that would continue with these. So that's her input on behalf of the license board. Council Ricketty, I think I saw your hand up?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I just, uh, to Council Matt Nash's point, I agree about the wordiness of that. Now, I, I personally do not like the phrase new normal because we should be getting back to normal. Um, I'd like to probably see it read if, if uh, the Town Council, the Town of Southbridge, and recognizing it is in the best interest to restore commerce and trade in a manner that protects the safety and health of our community hereby adopts this policy. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but I, I think that kind of gets the point that we want to restore it. Uh, but uh, does so in a less wordy manner. Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I appreciate the discussion on this particular item, but in general, I I, I try to just go with the flow on certain things, but when it comes to wording and specificity, we have an agenda item and a motion that calls for a process. The top of the document references a plan, then the bottom, this council's adopted policy. We need consistency in the wording. These businesses need to have access to this, so this needs to be done, but it needs to be done correctly. So I would, I would love to see it come before us, you know, complete in, in its nothing more. I, I, this just needs to go through.
Yeah, I, I, Council Nash, I, I understand your frustration with it. I know other boards from other towns are taking these up pretty quickly because of the timeliness to get these businesses open. Um, so uh, I did, I, you know, if, if it's a process, it's a process, it is a policy, it's a policy. But one, one way or another, we're going to get it so that these businesses can open because I know they're waiting on us and they have suffered long. Council Steve's?
I am. Just a quick question through you to Andy. Um, so what's your process going to be for notifying the businesses? Are they going to have to come to you? Are you going to reach out to them directly? How's that work?
Um, explain that. What you mean, to know that this is in place?
Yeah.
Um, the businesses are already coming to us. So um, like I said, Elm Street did a, did an application today. The um, coffee shop at, at the Flatiron Building actually has a table and chair out there that we're going to talk to them about. Um, it's on the sidewalk and possibly block the pedestrian and or wheelchair access. So the, the businesses are pushing for this already.
How, how are you going to work it with businesses that may, may not have, say, anything but sidewalk space to work with? How, how flexible are they going to be allowed to use, when it comes to, say, for example, using public, public property to do this kind of stuff for a temporary period?
Any use of public property is going to be, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Town Manager has the authority to use the public land. Um, he would have to be included if it's a public property. But we also have to be attentive to the use of that public land generally. Um, and unfortunately, there's some facilities out there that I'm just not going to have the space to do that. And it's unfortunate, but if, if they don't have a space to put a table, then there's just not going to be an option for them.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, to Council Nash's point, I, I would, I would say if you want to keep consistency, the commu, uh, health of our community hereby adopts this process as opposed to policy.
If the-
Since it is processed throughout. Is that a problem, Andy?
No, it is not. If the council is willing to vote on this with the change in language, I can make the language say, the Town Council of the Town of Southbridge, and recognizing it is in, is in the best interest of the Town of Southbridge. Um, the minis, I'm sorry, I missed the language. The Town Council of the Town of South-
Did he break up?
In recognizing it is in the best interest of the town of to restore commerce and trade, but to do so in a manner that protects the safety and health of our community and hereby adopts the process. So I can rewrite that paragraph and have it available for whoever's got the authority to sign it. Um, I would encourage that we don't put this off another week because I'd love to see our restaurants up and running, but obviously it's, it's the Town Council's decision whether this is, whether the value in opening them sooner is worth the wording or not. It's, it's totally up to the council.
Okay. Council Nash, do you have any?
Thank you. I, I concur. And this, we need to get this done and I, I apologize that I'm so critical. I'm not trying to be pointed toward any individual or board. I appreciate the good work that went behind this and into this. But what's more, the last sentence before the date is this policy, that word needs to be changed, needs to be corrected uh, to match. Otherwise, I appreciate the work. I'm ready to uh, support.
All right. Okay. Any further discussion on the amendments to this process? So Andy, if you, if it goes through uh, votes affirmatively, you just get a clean copy over to me uh, in the morning just to make sure that's the intent of the council or the changes that we look. Uh, if it, this goes through, then uh, I, I'm sure I have the authority to sign on behalf of the council as chairman.
Yes.
So any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, roll call. Uh, passed as the amendment.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
And Council Ricketty?
Yes.
And Andy, thank you for getting this to us quickly because it is important that those establishments do have the ability to um, get back on their feet. Uh, give me a call in the morning. I will uh, meet up uh, to make sure that's signed, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll do this first thing in the morning.
Thank you. I am thirteen. Vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Tri Valley Incorporated for the leasing of space for two thousand and twenty at the Southbridge Community Center in the amount of one hundred dollars per month respective to the responsibilities surrounded the Tri Valley nutrition site. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Back after a second. This Town Manager?
Yeah, I think we're all familiar with this. It's an annual process we go through. An agreement between the Town and Tri Valley. This is the Meals on Wheels program. Everybody's uh, very, very familiar with, Pat's on it, but I, I think we all understand what this is. It's a non-binding agreement, but it is just a practice and uh, just so it sets out the terms that we agreed to.
Thank you. Council Steve's?
Just for formality's sake, I work for Meals on Wheels, so I'll be abstaining.
Thank you. Council Daniel, do you have anything? No, no. Okay, I just saw you like green. Is there any other discussion? Um, the only question I have, it says uh, sign both copies. Is, is there a place to sign this? I, I, I know this is a, a regular thing, but does, it just says two thousand and twenty, is that for a year? Is it a fiscal year? Is it, there's no dates on this, though, at least the copy that I have?
Yeah, it's a, it's a non-binding agreement, but we can put it in a place for signature.
Um, okay.
Another thing, y'all.
Okay, thank you.
It's an annual, Mr. Chairman, annual, annual.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, question, uh, move the, uh, for a vote.
Council Steve's?
Abstain.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Ricketty?
Yes.
And Council Nash?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, with one abstention, Council Steve's. So it should be a seven, zero, one vote. Item fourteen, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and U E L Contractors for the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from project number six, four, five, eight, zero and number six, three, eight, one, zero for repair of Franklin Terrace wall. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Motion second. And I apologize for missing the typo on that. Uh, instead of contractors, it should be contractors. Um, this Town Manager?
Yeah, I think again, I think the council is very familiar with the Franklin Terrace wall replacement, Mrs. Antle. Uh, council worked very hard along with myself, Heather and Rob Caprera to work out this agreement. Uh, this is the actual contract uh, document. Um, you're going to see that this went, uh, it went a little bit over what we had in terms of money for this contract, so Heather can talk about that. As I was reading it, I did catch a technical typo error, error on the amount. So we sent you out a new page just correcting uh, the amount. It was, again, it was just a typo, but I defer to Heather for the um, the single bid contract that we got on this project.
Heather?
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Um, I believe you have all received in your packet our recommendation to award the contract, the summary of the bid information that we received, and a, a copy of the contract itself. Um, the contract comes right out of the bid documents that were sent out, filled in with the information regarding the contractor that we would are recommending the award to. Um, we had two projects, numbers associated with this project, one of them originally was more for the engineering of the project and the second one for the construction. Um, there's still money left in the engineering section. Um, we still do have an outstanding bill there and uh, but between the two projects right now and an additional item later on, we will have a diff, enough funds to complete the project, um, as long as nothing else goes wrong or happens. So we, um, there's about two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars with the two items left. We still have additional engineering costs we'll have to cover and the cost of the removal of the deck itself, which was part of the agreement. So um, I hope you'll support this. A lot of effort has gone into this project already. Uh, I am not usually one that is uh, supportive of only getting one bid, but we have done homework on them and they have done many projects very successfully. Um, going out to bid would likely just end up extending the timeframe and potentially just costing us more money. So at this time, unless you strongly feel that we need to go back out to bid and change the project, I recommend moving it forward.
Thank you. Discussion? Council Steve's?
Yeah, just one quick question through you to Heather. I just want to clarify that, um, did they make that, because we had issues previously, not this with these guys, but um, about how, making sure that they have all the insurance requirements and all that stuff. So have you confirmed that?
Um, yes, they're, they, they will have, they have to provide us with all the insurance requirements and the bonding once we award it. They are not required to provide any of that until that time, but they are a big company. They provide us with all the references. Um, they should have no problem meeting our requirements.
Have we ever worked with them before?
No. Not that I'm aware of, at least I should say.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it either.
Okay. Any further discussion? Council Ricketty?
I was just wondering if you could give us a timeframe when they might be starting on this. So this is, this is something we voted on a year ago. Just like to know when they might be starting on it.
Well, as soon as, as soon as the contract is awarded and we can get the process going, I know they're interested in getting it moving. Um, so a couple of things do have to happen. Uh, she has some requirements to be done before we can actually start construction, but the first step is getting the contract awarded and then we can start with timeline.
So you think it might happen this summer?
We're very hopeful that it will at least start this summer. It, once it gets going, it, it won't, as long as everything goes as planned, it's um, it should be relatively a quick turnaround. Um, there are some parts and pieces of it that they do have to order some equipment and make sure that they have the right stuff, but once it gets started, it will be, they'll want to form it up and get it poured as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for discussion? Seeing none. Roll call?
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
No.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
No.
Council Ricketty?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
And Council Steve's?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item fifteen, vote to ratify the agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Sid's Auto Body according to the rate of ton and storage established by the Department of Public Utilities pursuant to mass general law, chapter one fifty-nine B, section six B and two twenty CMR, two seventy-two, with effective date of July one, two thousand twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Steve, second by Council Manna, this is the Town Manager. It's Town Manager, can you unmute please?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by thanking the uh, Police Chief on this. It's a request for qualifications and there's really no cost of the town. Uh, the cost of the tow is actually to the citizen who has to be towed. Uh, the chief went at great lengths to make sure that this process was fair and wanted to open up to other companies. Uh, both the chief and I had the opportunity to evaluate three different companies. The chief can give you, I think, what are good reasons why we chose this particular company. It really wasn't a dollar issue as it was a service issue, particularly the service uh, to make it as easy as possible for citizens in Southbridge. With that, uh, I'll let the chief go on, but I appreciate his transparency on this issue.
Thank you. Chief Woodson?
I could have gotten through you, Mr. Chair. So this was obviously delayed due to the pandemic. This started probably in the late two thousand nineteen when we had a individual gentleman who was towed for our community for forty-two plus years. He retired and I got um, inundated with requests for police towing at that point in time. So I checked around all the communities. At that particular time, we had no, nothing in place, no contracts, anything like that. And, and in order to be transparent, giving everybody an equal opportunity, I asked the Town Manager to put out a, a list of qualifications for what he think, or what we both thought, we worked together on it, what the community needed. Uh, his office put that out and I thanked them for that. And we ended up getting three companies that were interested in towing for the community. Uh, the issue that I had as the chief is I, I went ahead and forwarded Sid's Auto at four ninety-five Dresser Hill Road. One of the big things with me, um, I've been a police officer for almost twenty-five years. Sid's Auto was towed for the police department for more than, for more than twenty-five years. He's always been professional and reliable. It's a local, family-owned business. And a big thing to me was when you get arrested or your car gets towed, you've got enough issues going on, you should not be inconvenienced in any way and have to go to another community or pay uh, extra mileage to be towed to another community. So out of those three people, three companies, I should say, that submitted their qualifications, they were all great, but only one had the actual, where you go pick your car up locally, you're only going to drive a mile or two, you know, you're in the community. You can pay on spot and then leave right there, minimal inconvenience. This is now, hopefully if it's approved, till June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. So if anybody in the future wants to tow for the community and I'm asked, I can say that we're under contract with a company now and you're more than welcome to bid. We'll put it out publicly again um, in two thousand twenty-three. So that's where I, where I stand on this. I support local business. Everybody in the council knows that. This is kind of a win-win for everybody, I think.
Thank you. Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Chief, for keeping this local. Appreciate it. I know Sid's been towing, as you said, for many years. He's been doing this by himself since about September of last year when, when Dave retired. And um, he's added staff, he's added- And, um, he's added staff, he's added a truck, so much appreciated. Thank you for, for keeping this local. Take it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of keeping it local, too. I just wanted to ask, though, um, where did, where were the other two coming from?
So through you, Mr. Chair, they're both, um, in, one was in Sturridge, and one was kind of on a Chalkton-Sturridge line. And one of the companies even went so far as to say that they would waive the mileage towing further away to a facility, but I still just couldn't get on board with the fact that, all right, um, my car's towed in one community, and I gotta try, even if it's five or six miles, I still have to go to another community to pay for it. And, and more, I kind of settled on more along the lines of, if it's not broke, don't fix it. We, we've had great towing experience for twenty-five plus years with one company, so why go outside the community if we don't have to?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Chief, thank you for putting this forward. I think it just, uh, professionalized this, that aspect of the towing. I know the towing gets into a, quite the controversy at times, so this kind of streamlines to this, that process. Now the town has a process by which companies can go by, uh, and, uh, ask for a contract once it's out there. So, uh, thank you for putting that together. I think it puts our town in a better stead, moving forward with consistency and process, which we've been working on for the last couple of years to, to put in place. So thank you for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manor?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Eight, zero. Thank you, chief. Item sixteen. This was postponed to this meeting from the prior meeting. Vote to amend schedule one to approve non-union two percent increases and positional changes effective July one, two thousand twenty, as proposed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counsel Sees, second by Counsel Adams. Um, discussion on this? Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, I think the town council knows my position on this. Uh, everyone knows, all union members get raises according to their union contracts. Uh, this really, schedule one deals with, uh, non-union employees, and schedule five deals with, uh, more basic, more part-time type of employees. Uh, we're really talking about eighty-nine total non-union employees, uh, that this impacts. I truly believe that this should be voted as is. Uh, I think it's only fair to be consistent across, uh, all employees as to how we deliver raises. These are all cost of living raises. Many of the non-union employees do not have steps, have already reached their steps, or they're at the maximums. So the only raises most of them will get will be their cost of living increase. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? I know it was held over, Counsel Marquetti?
Well, as I said at the last meeting, I'm not gonna support this unless we can differentiate between someone making over seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Some of these department heads are making over one hundred thousand dollars a year, some of them even, even more than that. Um, so if we can split it, those making seventy-five thousand dollars and less, I don't have a problem with it. Those making over seventy-five thousand, I think they, that would be a freeze. And you can call it whatever you want. Cost of living, step increase, whatever you want to call it, it's still a raise. So that's my position on it, and I won't support it unless we can, uh, make that amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So, um, the last meeting, I wasn't supporting this because I believed, I, and I still do believe in the merit increases. However, you know, when I was advocating more for, like, um, let's possibly, I don't know, do something late until after the pandemic's over and stuff, but, um, my, this last week has changed my mind on a lot of things, and, um, I'm going to, I'm going to support this. Um, but I do think it's worth looking into, um, in the future at how we go about the, um, you know, the increase based on merit, big way. Um, it, it would be a good conversation to have, but with all, everything that's taken place over the last week, you know what, I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
I was just gonna comment, just to let people know, in, in terms of Counsel Marquetti's comment, there are sixteen employees, non-union players over seven thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars. Two of the people, uh, by contract, uh, even though they're non-union, they're going to get the raises anyway. So it's really, this would impact fourteen employees, uh, at least Counsel Marquetti's comment would impact fourteen employees. But everybody else in town will get a raise except for those fourteen employees.
Thank you. Counsel Catrona?
Fourteen employees making over a hundred thousand, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As I stated last week, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I can't support this. I don't believe it's the right time. The news is just reporting today, local governments are gonna see twenty to thirty percent less in state revenue. There's going to be, um, there could be reduction in staff. Now is not the time. I agree, everybody's working hard. I agree that, that they may be deserving of this, but now is not, not the time to be giving out raises. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Adams, go.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, can you hear me? Okay, so, you know, I understand where, um, some of the councils are coming from. But when we look into these pay raises, we, we have failed to look into the fact that we have a police chief who's sitting as an I C S commander right now, um, who's not getting any type of stipend for the extra work he is doing, including his police officers. We also have our fire chief, who is emergency management director, who's not receiving a stipend, and other towns, they are. So basically, I'll go back off what I said before. Based on last time, the morale has already been affected. I'm not really sure where seventy-five thousand dollars came. I'm not in support of holding off on their pay raises at all. And the fact that we would even consider something like this. So serious lack of what our understanding of what our employees do on a day-to-day basis, especially during a pandemic. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Manor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just, the town manager was gonna comment on something after Counsel Marquetti, um, made a statement about fourteen employees making over a hundred thousand dollars. So I, I just, you know, I would like to hear what he has to say about that. That's all. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't see him. So go ahead.
You know, I talked about sixteen employees, uh, and four, two already have contracts, fourteen. They're not all over a hundred thousand dollars. Most are under a hundred thousand dollars. There's a couple that might be just over a hundred, but, but most of them are under a hundred. The, the ones that are closer to a hundred thousand dollars, quite frankly, are people like the finance director, who are contracted to police chief and me. Those three positions are over a hundred. There may be a couple slightly above it, but not many. Most of them are, are over seventy-five, but not over a hundred. I just didn't want to be a fight out there. These are all people making over a hundred grand. It's just simply not true.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, yeah, I'd like to respond.
Go ahead.
I hope the town manager isn't calling me a liar, because I looked at their pay raises. I looked at the budget, and I saw what it is. So please don't call me a liar. Thank you.
Uh, I don't think he addressed you as a liar, counsel. I, I think he said, he didn't agree with you, but I don't believe the words came out that he was calling you a liar. But I just want to be respectful on this. Um, I never heard the word liar come out from the town manager. You may have a difference of opinion and whatever the numbers are, but, uh, just want to keep it respectful.
Well, I said, you're not calling me a liar. That's all I said. Thank you.
And respectfully, I just ordered, uh, or commented that he did not say you were a liar. I just want that for the record. You may have difference of opinion on the amounts, but the word liar did not come out. I just want to respect to the town manager. He never addressed you directly or called you a liar. Mr. Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll take this opportunity to, uh, state my continued support for this, uh, and also my, uh, continued support to generate and publish the annual town report, which in two thousand eighteen laid out the wages and salaries and earnings of all town employees, which would be an excellent reference in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nash, that goes to my point about, uh, reports from subcommittees, because that is a requirement of the town, uh, report. So hopefully, we can get that accomplished. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manor?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
No.
Motion carries. Item seventeen, vote to amend schedule five to approve two percent increases effective July first, two thousand twenty, as proposed. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Go, Counsel Manor, uh, moved it. Counsel Steves seconded. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any other comments to put on this one?
These are all like low-paying people. Nobody even closes at twenty-five grand. They're mostly part-time and small, smaller, lower-paid non-union people.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Marquetti?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to abstain on this one. My wife is an election worker. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I know last time we talked about the increase in, in the, uh, minimum wage. Uh, I mean, is it appropriate at this time that we, uh, could, could we amend this to state that, um, where, where those that are in the minimum wage increase would go to what the minimum wage automatic increase would be at this time, or should we wait for that to, um, come at the, uh, time that they raise the minimum wage?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that was already done in this. Um, that's the finance, pretty sure it's already done in this. Is the finance director, can you have a clear answer on that?
Well, it's gonna change again, I think, January one, that's my point, the, the new one, so that's, say, effective on with the, the change that we do this all at this time, as opposed to having to bring it back, uh, when that automatic change goes. Karen?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I probably wouldn't recommending it, doing it now, because there are some positions that go up to the minimum wa, minimum wage, but there's a couple that are just above, like a step above that, that we have to figure out the differential.
Okay, that's fine. I, I, and I remember that conversation. I just thought it'd be easier if we did it all at once, but I, I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manor?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Abstain.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries on a six, one, one vote. Item eighteen, vote to approve Jacob Edwards' library transfer for account number zero, zero, one, six, one, zero, dash, five, four, two, zero, 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 office supplies to account number zero, zero, one, six, one, zero, dash, five, two, three, zero, 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 one, and suing the amount of forty-nine dollars and seven cents due to underfunding to pay the final quarter. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, uh, I mean, I think this is pretty simple. Anything else to add? Anybody have any questions for the town manager on this? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Manor?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Item nineteen, vote to approve a veteran services transfer from account number zero, zero, one, five, four, three, dash, five, four, two, zero, 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 office supplies to account number zero, zero, one, five, four, three, dash, five, two, four, two, zero, zero, data processing, the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars to cover charges for data processing through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second.
Counsel Manor moved. Counsel Steves, uh, Mr. Town Manager, do you have any, anything on this one? Do you know what it is for data processing? Or Karen? Or any questions based on the paperwork that they sent in? I guess we'll go that way. Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Manor?
Yes.
Okay, I do know, Deputy Fire Chief Hewlock is here in the, uh, to fill in for Chief Normandin, who have an emergency. So any questions on these items for the fire, I will go through Chief Hewlock. Uh, item twenty, vote to approve a fire department transfer from account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, dash, nine, three, zero, zero, tuition, to account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, dash, five, two, four, three, zero, zero, repair maintenance of buildings, amount of two thousand dollars for the plymo vent system repairs, calibration of the department breathing air compressor, and annual fee for preventive maintenance. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second.
Okay. Questions of the deputy chief? Okay. As the year closes out, we'll get a lot more transfers, uh, throughout the rest of the year, so, um, seeing no further discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manor?
Yes.
And Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Oops.
Item twenty-one, vote to approve a fire department transfer from account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, dash, five, three, four, two, zero, zero, print of forms to account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, dash, five, four, five, zero, 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 janitorial and housekeeping, and the amount of three hundred dollars for additional supplies needed for the new gear washer and general supplies from the school system. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think you skipped an item.
I missed one, yeah, I did. Uh, do you mind taking these out of order, and I'll just go back, or let me?
I'm fine.
That's fine with me.
Okay, okay. Is there a motion on number?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that one? Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manor?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
And Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty-one, to approve a fire department transfer from account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, dash, five, eight, five, six, zero, zero, fire safety equipment to account number zero, zero, one, two, two, zero, dash, five, five, eight, seven, zero, zero, parts and supplies, non-vehicle, in the amount of four hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Promote. Second.
Go, Counsel, Counsel Nash, and then Counsel Manor. Seconded, discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manor?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
No.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero, zero, one, two, one, zero, dash, five, one, one, zero, 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 salary to account number zero, zero, one, two, one, zero, dash, five, two, four, four, zero, zero, carpe releases in the amount of two hundred and ten dollars of, to cover the cost for a new car per the lease agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Promote.
Second.
Okay, go. Counsel Nash moved it. Counsel Manor second. Uh, any discussion or questions for the police? What's that?
Counsel Adams, second.
You both came in about the same time, so I was giving it to you, but we'll go to Counsel Adams on that. Okay. Uh, any further discussion on that one? Questions for the police chief? Counsel, uh, Chief Woodson, I'm sorry, your hand is up. Sorry. Go ahead. Any further discussion on that one? Questions for the police chief? Counsel, Chief Woodson, I'm sorry, your hand is up, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly don't want to extend this meeting at all, but I just want to touch base because I'm here before you tonight with about thirty-nine thousand dollars and some change in transfers, and I feel that some of it is in explanation. So my budget for FY twenty, which is approved by the council, was four million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. Every single transfer you have tonight and the previous meetings we've had are all within my budget, so I'm not over budget. Just want to be clear on that. All the transfers are within accounts that are always underfunded during the budget process, or they submit unexpected increases because of things I couldn't control. Since oh-nine, when I was a lieutenant involved in budgets, almost eleven years now, the chief has always, always, always had to go back to council and do transfers, especially as we approach the end of every fiscal year. This is true for other departments in town, and we were just never required to come to council, so a lot of the councils may have not even been aware of it because it was in our existing budget. Couple of years ago, that changed. I'm in favor of that. I want to be transparent. I want the elected officials to know exactly what we're spending in our police department. So since two thousand sixteen, I've always asked for more money in accounts. I'm always told you have to level fund. Over the last couple of years, I've worked hard with the town manager and the finance director at correcting that, and they've been great with me, I'll give them that. But as recently as only a few months ago, I had to meet with the town manager and the finance director and level fund all my accounts again going into fiscal year twenty-one. So I'll be back again next year to do transfers because I'm telling you now that there are many accounts that are not properly budgeted, but in light of the situation, I understand it. Not gonna argue it, it's not gonna change, but I'll just have to continue marching forward. So this, tonight, again, it's about thirty-nine thousand dollars, but half of that transfers to some equipment that I never thought my department would ever need, and I'll elaborate on that a little bit later. And I only mention this again because all these transfers are from one account to another. I don't know when that became a bad thing. It just seems like it's looked as a negative now doing transfers, but I only request them when money's needed. I only request them when I have other places. Salary issues, we have less employees, someone quits, it takes six months to replace them. That's the reason why I have this kind of funding available right now. So that's all I have counsel on that aspect of it. I just felt like I needed to explain it because of the amounts of money that I come and request be moved within my existing budget.
Thank, thank you, chief. Okay. All right, so I had a motion and a second on item number twenty-three. Is there any further discussion on that? Counselor Nash, did you have something?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
People actually pay attention to this, but we're not voting willy-nilly on this. We do get backup information that we refer to before we cast our votes, that we all have the opportunity to ask questions before we get to this stage of the game at a council meeting. So I appreciate the answers I've gotten to the ones that I've posed. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, and I'd like to thank Karen for taking, you know, when I approached her about this transfer form and the details, and I think it does lend transparency to the, to the meeting and departments can ask questions. So, so thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-one. Twenty-four, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-three-zero-zero-zero specialized services in the amount of one thousand dollars to cover unexpected costs for a recent fitness for duty evaluation. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second.
I'll leave that one up to Mary to figure out. Any discussion on this? Questions? Any questions of the chief on this transfer? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty-five, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-two-four-two-zero-zero data processing in the amount of four hundred dollars to cover unexpected technology purchases. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second.
That was clear, Counselor Manna and Counselor Nash. Any questions of the chief for this transfer?
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Through you to Chief Woodson. What exactly was the unexpected technology purchase that was, that preceded this transfer request, chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we had two desktop computers in the station that were running like a Vista, some like ten-year-old plus software. We had to upgrade all the Microsoft, same desktop, we had to upgrade in function within the department for two different machines.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any further, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Chief Woodson. If your desktops were running off Vista, then your desktops are pretty old, and I would recommend discussing that for the next budget season. It seems like you need some new technology down there.
We do, if I could, Mr. Chair, we do, but we're working on it. You might see me again in a few weeks.
I won't see you. Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-one. Twenty-six, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-two-four-one-zero-zero automobile repair, auto repair in the amount of five thousand dollars for repairs to two cruisers recently involved in accidents and possible additional expenses for unknown repairs to the fleet prior to the end of the fiscal year. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions of the chief? Any questions of the chief? Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, just so I can clarify that, we had two vehicles, I spoke to Tom Manager about this a while ago, involved in minor accidents, but unfortunately the repairs are pretty steep. So this is just strictly to cover the deductibles as it says, but I just want to be clear on it. Body damage to the fleet that needs to be repaired.
Excuse me. Any further questions of the chief? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes. Item twenty-seven, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-two-three-zero-zero-zero water and sewer in the amount of seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents. If insufficient money is to cover the entire fiscal year, do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Manna, second by Counselor Nash. Any questions of the chief on this? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Nash.
Thank you. I believe water and sewer bills were due today, and though we have a measure in place that would not penalize residents, does that apply to town departments as well? I don't remember how our measure was.
I don't know the answer.
Because I want to make sure that the chief isn't overdue.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Nash. Is there any response to that from anybody?
I'll look into it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Roll call.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-one. Item twenty-eight, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-five-zero-zero-zero holiday in the amount of five thousand four hundred dollars to cover the cost of holiday salaries that have increased as a result of two additional dispatches being added to the staff. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second, back in. Chief Woodson?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, this is one that I knew last year we were gonna go over with hiring additional personnel, but we level funded it. I knew we were gonna need the money. This is for dispatches because they have to work holidays and we have to pay them to work holidays. They get time and a half, so this essentially, this just covers the previous memorial holiday. That's our last holiday this fiscal year. So this would be the only transfer needed to that account.
Thank you. Any further questions for the chief? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
And Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Motion carries seven-one. Twenty-nine, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-seven-zero-zero high-time salary in the amount of five thousand dollars for the additional hours for janitor and per diem dispatches due to staffing shortages and coverage while we hire and train new staff to fill existing vacancies. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second.
The second. Motion is second. Chief, did you have something you wanted to add on this?
Well, just that with the higher numbers, I feel there's an explanation. The additional hours for the per diem dispatcher, we have unfortunately had a we'll call it a terrible time or a difficult time hiring full-time dispatches. It's a very difficult place to work, very stressful environment, it's certainly not for everybody, and this is just, again, additional coverage that we've had to pay per diems out of the high-time salary account until we can finally get eight full-time dispatches. Right now, we have them in place, so I don't anticipate any other problems, but not, you know, I can't be sure on that, so this will cover us to June thirtieth. This is also boosting the hours for our custodian. Even prior to the COVID pandemic, he was working more, and now he's really working more. So sterilizing the building.
Okay. Any further discussion with the chief? Questions of the chief? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
And Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Again, motion carries. Item thirty, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-four-eight-zero-zero-zero motor vehicle parts and accessories in the amount of five thousand dollars the adequate supply of police-issue tires as we approach the end of the fiscal year. Is there a motion?
Promote.
Second.
Motion is second, Chief Woodson.
And again, Mr. Chairman, not to hijack the meeting, but I currently have a little over thirty-four hundred dollars in this account. This would strictly be purchased tires. I ask, I talk about tires during every budget season. I'm always told to wait, not just by this town manager, but other town managers, and that's okay because every year, this is what we do. At least for the last ten-plus years, we've been coming to council at the end of the fiscal year, transferring money from other accounts and buying tires. Tires for one police vehicle, for a police-rated tire, it's, you know, probably almost eight hundred dollars a car. So it adds up quickly, and we need to have tires on reserve, and that's what this will allow for proof.
Thank you. Questions of the chief? Chief Woodson, our own mechanic puts them in though, right? Imbalances and everything. Do you do that yourself?
Absolutely.
For the department?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it's just the supplies?
Yes.
I do know most police departments do that, and I never saw cruisers go through so many tires, but I haven't been in the profession. I've seen firsthand how quickly they do go, even though it's not a lot of miles, but for some reason, they do go. Any further questions of the chief? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Okay. Item thirty-one, vote to approve a police department transfer from account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salary to account number zero-zero-one-two-one-zero-dash-point-five-zero-five-five-zero-three-zero-zero safety patrol supplies in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred ninety dollars to cover unexpected costs to protective helmets and shields for thirty-eight police officers to ensure their safety. Is there a motion?
So move.
Promote.
Second.
Motion is second. Chief Woodson?
And again, Mr. Chairman, this issue was something that, you know, my twenty-five years of experience, we've never needed in our community. But as of right now, we are, we're very short on this type of equipment, we'll say, and we'll leave it there. I hope that we never need this equipment. If this is approved, this makes it so every single police officer working for us has the appropriate protective equipment if we have any serious issues of civil unrest or anything like that in our community. And again, I hope that this will last us twenty, twenty-five years, and I hope that we never even have to use it, but I need to have something in place to keep everybody safe. And I, again, I never, I was hoping we would never need this, but I think that's the direction it's going in, and whether you were for the police or against the police, I, as the chief, I am in good conscience, I think we need to make this purchase, we have the money available. Let's do this, let's keep everybody safe.
Mr. Chair?
Discussion? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I fully support this. Is it gonna be enough money to cover all that change?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I believe this will be enough, and also, if there's a question, I forgot to add, I can have this, you know, here within days, if it's approved tonight.
Okay, so, but I, I, I think it would, there should be like an expiration on your helmet, so I think that should be looked at every few years, not twenty-five years.
Well, I was being facetious with that, yes.
But I am in full support of this, and I'm in full support if you even need more money for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
And yeah, one quick question is, why wasn't this put through as capital?
Through you, Mr. Chair, because at that particular time, and quite honestly, and I don't want to give up our whole operations plan, but there isn't a department in the area in Central Mass, other than Worcester, that has any of this equipment or that anybody ever budgeted for because none of our communities ever needed it. So I didn't really feel comfortable coming forward to the council and asking them for this type of process item unless it was absolutely needed. And we have some, but we don't have enough to protect everybody that could possibly be working. So that's why it wasn't a capital item. It not, it never even occurred to me that we would be at this point where I would need more than ten or eleven pieces of equipment, but we're at that point now.
Yeah, I'm not sure we are, to be honest with you, because it's, I, I'm really, really uncomfortable with the idea of further militarizing our police. And I don't think that we have a situation where our community has any track record of violence, significant violence, I should say. I mean, yes, there are individuals, of course.
You're correct with that, but yes, okay.
You just said that we haven't had any need for it. Yes, there are protests going on, but like, I know we have, we have the thing that's going on tomorrow, but you also look at what happened in Webster, several hundred people showed up. The police were around, nobody was wearing riot gear. Everybody moved, everything moved very smoothly. I think the issue is, is not so much I think the issue is, is not so much um, having these, this kind of equipment. It is, I think, a much better investment. Is investing in building the relationships within the community, which I think you guys have done a fairly good job of. So I think that's where we should be putting the effort personally.
Can I comment on this?
I'm not opposed to to making sure that our, that our 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 police officers are safe, because they should be. But this is, I I personally think this is a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Counselor Steves, you're all set. You're all set, Counselor Steves? Go ahead, Chief Whitson, and then I'll go to Counselor Manna.
Ju- just so we're clear, Counselor Steves, even if we have this equipment today, we would not have this out tomorrow. Th- this is not for that type of event. This would be if it's violent and there's issues. We wouldn't just break this out for every single protest or every single meeting or gathering. Absolutely not. I'm not in favor of that either. Tomorrow, we're gonna have assets in place um, that won't even be seen. Because I don't wanna make things worse than they already are in in the in the country, as far as policing and the way that people view us. Um, this is only a last ditch effort where people will be hurt if we're not wearing it. And just I've been involved in situations myself where these riots, hundred people, two hundred people against five cops. And no, none of us ever have riot gear. I've been in probably fifty of them in the last twenty years, and we just deal with it. But when you're talking a thousand people or five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred people, this type of gear would be appropriate if it's a violent protest. Again, even if we had this tonight, if I had this in storage or every officer, we would not have this tomorrow. Because I don't believe we're gonna need it for an event like tomorrow or what Webster used. I certainly don't want to be out there with all of our military equipment. Um, you know, challenging people and confronting them, and we're hoping to keep things peaceful. This is a last ditch effort. So I, I just want to clarify, I don't, we don't plan on breaking this out for every event, and you will never see this unless it's absolutely the last thing that we can do to keep our people safe. So I know I'm not gonna change your mind on it, but I just wanted you to hear it from me, so you know where I'm coming from with this.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Back to Counselor Steve, if he has. Go ahead, Counselor Mann. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Thew. So I just, I I respectfully disagree with Counselor Steves. Our police department needs protective gear. I'm sorry, the world is changing. Uh, it's changed the last two weeks right before my eyes. I've been watching America burn on TV, and the police have been attacked. They've been attacked before. They've been targeted before. Our police officers in town. Few years back, the fire department came down. There was a riot foreman. They had to come out with their fire truck and their fire hose to keep the people back. They were attacked just a couple of years ago. Somebody blew up one of their cars i- i- in the parking lot. You know, so, you know, very passionate about this. And, you know, I thank God we have our police, and we're still not fully staffed. There we go, we're still not fully staffed, and I'll get to that at the end of the the meeting. But um, I'm in full support of this, and they need more money for gear. Um, even in more support um, for when riot situations. I, my first ride along, I I mean, I I was like riding about eight years ago. I I hear feedback. I hear feedback. The first, my first ride along with the police department, I remember I was doing it with Deputy Chief Dinghy. And we, we did a stop um up in an area in Southbridge, and somebody called out a name. The next thing you know, there's like a hundred people coming out, and it's just Officer Dinghy, and he had to get two other cops up there. So now there's only three cops, and that was like a riot type um. Uh, it it was like riot type, it was a war. Like, i- it was, it was it was gonna escalate to something as a riot type. All those people coming out with three officers, you know, a hundred against three. What the heck you gonna do? You gotta protect yourself. And I'm in full, full agreement with this. Thank you.
There are noted, Jack.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Steves, I'll go back to you. Did you have a response, Counselor Whitson? I wasn't trying to um, stop you, which is Counselor Mann had the floor next.
No, I got that. I understood that. Um, the only the only thing I just wanted to add to is that, that as I said, I think I'm I'm really concerned about this, because because I, and I understand your your points, both Counselor Manna and Chief Whitson. Um, but it, I, I'm, I'm really concerned that when you look, when you, how how do you, how do you avoid being in a situation where if you have the an increased ability to, to, when, because the problem is when you get to the point of having the, some of these kinds of quote-unquote defensive measures, they are in some cases almost a pretext to promote violence. As opposed to encouraging situations where people can talk people down, each other down. I'd love to know, uh, maybe, maybe that that's, that creates a question, I guess, through you to to Chief Whitson. Um, what kinds of training programs does the, do the police department, does the police department currently have in de-escalation?
Counsel. Do you want me to answer that? Or how do you want to do this? We, because we're gonna go off on a whole other training segment and
Um, it's, it's up to you if you want to just briefly, I mean, I know police officers are trained in de-escalation. Uh, you you heard that, uh.
I can, I just don't want to get off topic, but I will, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we, we have that training, recruit officer training, Counselor Steves. Wait in the very beginning of your career, and then search training every year, especially the last, say uh, four or five years. Every year, we have to go to forty hours of training. In the last, again, four or five years, we've had an increase in like cultural diversity, escalation techniques and that type of thing. So it's not all, um, you know, force on force, but unfortunately, there are some bad people in the world, and you have to meet force with force, and this just protects my guys and girls from getting hurt. Not everybody should be met with the same measures, but you have to have the amount of force that's necessary to keep control of your town or your city, and make sure that there's not vandalism and rioting and looting, and I'm all about the peaceful protest. I'll be marching tomorrow as long as it's peaceful. Um, all good cops are against bad cops. Um, we, we, I cringe when I see videos of police officers doing bad things, but that's not our community. And I hope, again, you, I think you said it earlier, that we never need this equipment. I hope we do, because we have a great relationship in the community, but this is just a precautionary measure that I I feel like I need to put in place to keep our people safe. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Nash, did you have? I don't know if I saw your hand up.
I did, I did. Thank you. Through you, uh, a lot of what was on my mind has already been said, but I'll uh, voice my support once again for this. Uh, I appreciate that. While maybe this may not be seen as all that proactive, this so-called new normal is really kind of a scary thing. You know, some communities that you see on the news, maybe you wouldn't expect riots and violence to occur, but the hostilities are there. Now, there's a lot going on in this world where people may be on the edge. You know, I've made comments and references to emergency preparedness. Um, that extends beyond those that are public servants in the employee capacity, but uh, Mr. Chairman, you and others have heard me say before that we need to have publicly elected officials trained in certain circumstances. I don't need to elaborate. I look at this as a no-brainer. You know, the chief is right. If we don't have this stuff, we may need it someday, but even if we don't, it's a small investment to make to ensure that thirty-eight or more staffers of our public safety department are able to defend themselves. It is not overly militaristic in offensive measures, but for defense, I'd love to see these people protected. Uh, this is, this is not one that I would back away from whatsoever, so I, I can appreciate the sentiment Counselor Steve shared about uh, moving in a direction where we're uh, continuing to to enhance relationships in our community with our police department. I think Shane's right. He's, he and his team have been doing that for years, and I think that most of us recognize that. But we are at a point where if we don't have this and something happens, we're gonna say, oh, shoot, we had the opportunity, why didn't we do it? Seventeen grand is absolutely worth everybody for this investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. Counselor Adams?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Counselor Nash took it right out of my mouth. These are defensive um materials, not offensive materials. If he rolled in with an LAV from a military stock or a light armored vehicle, I'd have a problem with that. Um, especially for a town this size. Um, I, 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 I'm glad that the chief is now thinking about this, and the fact that uh, the town was not prepared before. Uh, kind of boggles my mind as far as um, in the past, uh, but you never say never, because they could easily turn uh, today, tomorrow, next week, and you just never know. I'd rather have the the police protected uh, at this point in time in defensive tactics, measures and and de-escalation uh, tactics than um, not prepared at all. So uh, over preparedness on this side on defensive tactics and defensive equipment. Uh, it's, it's a simple process. If he were to say, I want, you know, spears to go along that and the phalanx of the the Roman times and all that kind of stuff, then I got a problem, but he's not. He's asking for defensive gear for his men and women, because one goes out, two goes out, three goes out, then he's got a problem. So um, I'm in in favor of this, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel, did you have? I see you like green. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Counselor Marquetti is before me.
Okay, uh. Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, I would have to agree with Counselor Steves on this. I don't think this is needed. Um, I think that uh, we have to keep in mind of why people are protesting. Uh, uh, but I do think that most of the protesters are very peaceful. Uh, you're gonna see a lot of things in the news about some of the violence, but most of the, I would say a majority of the protesters are very peaceful. Just like a majority of police officers are very peaceful. And uh, the other reason for this and the other other uh, agenda items that I've been voting no on is that I don't like to see salaries transferred like this. These things were for salaries. They should stay in the salaries. If you want to put them back into the town coffers, and then you want to come forward with something else, that I have no problem with, but these were specifically, this was all specifically for salaries, and that I would like to see it stay there. So I'm gonna have to agree with Counselor Steves. This isn't needed, but just keep in mind why people are protesting. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'm gonna support this measure. I believe that these instruments are defensive. Um, I understand that the majority of protests are peaceful, uh, but the problem is, is the majority is not all. And at some point in time, I think it's prudent on the part of our chief of police to want to protect uh, his people. And um, I think that this is, this is a reasonable request. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll circle back to Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Chief Whitson. Chief Whitson, how about the auxiliary? Do they need any of this equipment? Would you ever utilize them in any type of situation like this?
No, they're not trained to handle this type of, that type of environment. They're reserve intermittent police officers, and I wouldn't want to put them in that that arena if if it came to that. I want fully trained police officers there. We'd call for mutual aid from other communities, mass state police, that type of thing. So no, this would not outfit them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I think all the counsel, Counselor Catrona, did you have anything you wanted to add? Are you all set? Want to show I recognize you? Mr. Town Manager, you had something you want to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, this is an agenda, and I support it, uh, because it is defensive, and I want to make sure that our police officers are well protected. But you know, I I want to comment, I've been here for five years, and of all departments that I've ever worked with, uh, this, the police department has went out of its way to make sure that its representation in terms of police officers and staff is reflective of the community. And it's just that type of of attitude uh, that makes it so we don't have the kind of situation that other towns do. Al- almost half of our department is either brown or black. Um, and the the chief, and particularly the deputy chief, they go so far out of their way to engage in in all uh, different parts of the town and different communities. Relationship is is frankly tremendous, better than I've ever seen of a police department and its people. So you know, I want to thank the chief for putting us in a situation where I think the the citizens of Southbridge know our police department, understand and have great communication with it. Very frankly, if I'm scared of anything, of events like tomorrow or going forward, it's really not of Southbridge residents, but of other people from other towns who don't know our police department, who don't know our history, who may come into the town for whatever reasons of their own. But I think the the police need to be protected. This is obviously not aggressive type of equipment, but self-defensive in nature. And in knowing this chief and knowing this deputy chief, I am absolutely positive, and even from discussions we had about tomorrow, that these people understand the situation on the ground, and when you have to use this equipment, when you don't have to use this equipment. And I I would agree that the chief and deputy chief will go way out of their way not to put this equipment on. It'll be uh, equipment that's needed as a last resort, but when there is a last resort, when there is a problem, you want to have the right equipment in the hands of the police department to protect themselves. So I I think this is something we want to have in, just in case we need it. Uh, I would hate to lose the life of one of our officers uh, during a bad situation, and I I think that counselors also would feel they want to make sure that our police officers are protected. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So um, I'd like to thank you all for this thoughtful discussion about what's going on and um the United States uh, and the world today, when it comes to these situations. Having been involved in public safety for over thirty years, you know, I've I've seen uh, a a lot of stuff over the years, and uh, when I started out as a police officer, I never would have thought that uh, thirty years later, the equipment that I have to carry in a police cruiser to wear a bulletproof vest, uh, to have armored plates uh, in case of active shooting, uh, incidents in schools and communities. I never thought I'd see the day, and I I never thought that uh, uh, we'd see the day of the uh, unrest that we see right now. Perhaps it was in the sixties before I was born. Uh, but I don't see this as a uh as a topic that is gonna um, go away in a week. Um, I think uh, these uh, discussions and protests throughout the uh, country are gonna go on for for some time. Uh, and this, to me, is, I agree with Chief Whitson. In uh, uh, an office, a a storage room that is never needed, but to have the ability to protect officers and businesses and citizens of the town of Southbridge. Uh, they need the tools to do that. Um, I know in my uh, last few years, getting back into uh, policing the level of training that the Commonwealth puts out to Massachusetts police officers on de-escalation. For the point of Counselor Steve's, de-escalation, how to talk and and discuss with the uh, issues that have uh, mental illness. The mass criminal justice has really been at the forefront of trying to put these topics out to us. I'm just speaking as a, as a police officer that has to go through that training, that, that um, there's been a lot of commitment in Massachusetts, at least, to make sure that police officers are doing the right thing, and how to deal with these um instances. Uh, I'm all for giving police officers and the fire department uh, all the equipment that we need to make sure that we're prepared to protect our our citizens. Um, you know, we do have that event tomorrow, and I'm looking at the other communities, they have gone off very peacefully, and I hope that continues. Um, the concern that I have is, is where you see some comments where they say, okay, you're having this one, but it's, it's it's, well, there's gonna be more. So how does that escalate? And we have to make sure that just as a community, we are prepared to protect all the residents of of Southbridge, those that uh, protest peacefully. And uh, to a previous speaker's point, uh, I do know why we're having these talks and these these uh protests, and I hope there's a lot of good conversations in the country as to uh, police officer relationships. And Town Manager hit it on the head, and I've said it over the years, and I think I said this to one of the organizers of tomorrow's event. When the question was posed to her, do you think we have a problem in the Southbridge Police Department? Well, well, no. Okay, well, then the conversation throughout the country is about our our police officers and how they interact. But we do have a well-diverse police department. It is probably the I have, no, not probably, it is one of the most diverse reflective police uh, uh, departments in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that truly represents the community that we live in. All the way from top to bottom, and I'm proud of the police department um, and what they do and how they handle situations, so I fully support this. Um, is there any further discussion on this? CNN roll call.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Nash?
My hand up. I want to make one, one quick point. And 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 it's, while it's related to this particular purchase or hopefully a purchase, I think it's indicative and it's representative of so many other things that we see in this community where we are not prepared. We are just getting by with a hundred and twenty-year-old fire department, the firehouse uh, that is not even close to being up to code. We have roads that have been uh, run rampant and are in terrible shape. We keep kicking the can down the road. We're at a point where this transfer makes sense for a purchase that should have happened twenty-five, thirty years ago, perhaps. We can make this happen with a simple, relatively simple transfer tonight, rather than waiting and seeing if uh, the next council perhaps makes changes to the already approved budgets to make cuts, because that's a possibility, and that's something that we all need to be aware of. I don't think that there's any, any reason that I can think of. I don't think that there's any any reason that I can think of to attribute this just to the potential. That is is now existent because of the world in which we live. This is, this should have been done a long time ago. It can be used for other things, of course. And it's really unfortunate that the circumstances that we now could face related to COVID nineteen and some of these other circumstances that have changed our world. Are the driving forces that put Chief Woodson in a position where he has to make a transfer that gets questioned. I certainly continue to support this, but this community needs to start thinking about. Where do we wanna be? How are we gonna get there? How are we gonna make sure we have what we need? We can't keep kicking the the can down the road. That's been said for so many years. I certainly hope too, Chief Woodson, you don't ever have to use this equipment, but you all, you have my support. I appreciate the work you and your department does. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Steve's?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I appreciate the the work that the police department does as well. And I'm very, very much in agreement with what several of you have said about there being. A very well-balanced representation of our community. I think it's, they've done a very good job. I'm just really concerned about, as I mentioned, just the over over reliance on technology. Being too much of a fallback and creating situations that we may not. That's what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Councilor Steve's. Anything further?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Just a point of clarification. One of the organizers actually said that we were the model police department. For this type of thing, so they uh and that's that's uh I just wanted to put that on the record that. The organizers are very supportive of the department, not just because of me, but because all the men and women that work. For our town, including me, uh we've devoted our lives to the community and to to pushing our brand. And establishing relationships in the community. And the organizers were very impressed and when they had said that we were a model department. When it comes to relations and relationships with race, ethnicity and that types of thing and reaching out in the community. And in building bridges, uh that that made me feel pretty darn good about what we do at our place and. I'm just proud of all the men and women that work for us. We're lucky to have them.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Manna, did you have one more thing?
Yeah, thank you. I I I just wanna say I, you know. We do have a very good police department and they do have good community outreach, especially with the younger. Generation, those kids, you know, and that's and and they keep that relationship. Um. It it's, I don't believe it's the, you know, the residents that we have to worry about. It is the other people that come into town. Who wanna cause that trouble, you know? I don't wanna put a police officer's um life at risk. You know, just like they don't wanna put one of the protesters' lives at risk. So. You know, to not support this i- is putting everyone's life at risk. If that ever came down to it. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Katrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
No.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
And Councilor Steve?
No.
And Councilor Adams?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. I have thirty-two votes to approve a Department of Public Works transfer from account number zero zero one four nine nine. Dash five two three zero 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 dash it's zero four nine nine, water and sewer. To account number zero zero one four nine nine. Dash five two four three zero zero dash zero four nine nine, repair maintenance buildings and grounds. DPW and the amount of five hundred dollars for inspection of vehicle lifts for maintenance of town vehicles. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, I think the uh DPW director did a great job in explaining uh this motion to basically take care of. Repairs that need to be done and and maintenance kind of items to the end of the year. So I think it it's pretty well said in their memo, but. She is here if you have any questions.
Any questions of the Department of Public Works? Director? Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
No.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steve's?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
And Councilor Katrona?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. I have thirty-three votes to approve the Town Manager Finance Request Transfer from Project Number Six Five Two Two Zero. Sale of Real Estate Receipts Reserve to Account Number Nine One Three Three to the Roadway Improvement Fund. In the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for roadway funding. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think that all the counselors understand this. Uh, this was in my budget presentation. Uh, counselors uh have put a very strong focus on on road repair and road improvement. Uh, myself as the DPW director have have worked hard uh to see that this occurs. This two hundred thousand dollars will be added to uh money we already have uh in the annual line item for road repairs. So um again, you saw in the presentation, I think there's three or four different roads that we're talking about doing. And counselors uh thought this was a great idea and we put it into the uh into this line item uh to ensure that we could do a. Major improvement a couple of roads. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. DPW directors.
Councilor Steve's?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Ryan or Heather, I'm just curious, just where this uh the. Account that it's coming from, how much is in it and how long, uh you know, how long has it, have we had money in that account?
I think that answer should go to finance. She has that account information. I don't have. That account information on hand, but I'm sure she can.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if I could. The balance in the account is just over two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. And the balance has been there for a couple of years. You can only use that balance on um items that you can bond. Five years or longer, so that's why we're recommending that we use it for this purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Heather? Heather, do you have anything to add?
Um, I I I will just say that this will go tremendously far for us to get a bigger benefit for our funds invested. This will give us more money to leverage so that we get more competitive and more companies interested in coming and doing our projects. Um, we will have a better sense once, once we have the money approved, we can go out to bid. And get a really good sense of how much and maybe be able even to potentially do more roads than what we originally budgeted. Or originally planned to do.
Thank you. Councilor Marketti, did you have a question? I didn't know if it's so you can't go up.
No, no, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Steve's?
Yeah, just a quick question for clarification. When, if we vote to vet, to add this in, you have already like ninety-five grand in that account, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Councilor Adams?
I'm good. That was the question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Just, Mr. Chairman, and Heather, correct me if I'm wrong. So we had ninety-five thousand dollars, a little over ninety-five thousand dollars from last year. We're adding uh more money from this year plus this two hundred grand. So it should be two hundred, four hundred, close to five hundred grand. Am I correct, Heather?
That's correct.
For roads this year.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Adams?
So just to clarify, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, next year when we're looking at this, we're looking at putting three hundred thousand dollars away in the budget. Within the budget. So one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, this two hundred is just on top of that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Daniel?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you through you to Heather. Um, are you, are you planning on bidding this out as one large project to go throughout the town?
So the way we would plan to bid it out is we will get, um, we'll list a potential list of roads that we would like to do. We will ask for a square yard or and per ton cost for paving, so we're looking at potential reclaim. We're looking at potential um grind and. And resurface, so we'll be putting it out as a lump bid and then we'll be able to use that money and see how far we can go. And some of the roads, as you know, that we're looking at include. Brentwood Drive include. I went, I'm screwing up the names because I'm so tired at this point, so I'm sorry. Um, over near pros, some of the roads over near Prospect Street and over in there. So we will add roads as needed, but we have our targeted roads already listed.
Very good, thank you. Hey, Councilor Adams?
Sorry, I apologize. You said we, Karen, we had under uh, we had about thirty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred thirty-eight thousand within that account? That what you said?
Yes, that's correct.
So why, just recommendation, why not just put that thirty-eight thousand dollars with the two hundred thousand? Is there gonna be some use for that thirty-eight thousand later on?
Not necessarily. I mean, it'll stay in there. It can be used at another time, but no.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any further, just Councilor Steve's? Um, yeah, um, it's curious is, I I believe that the the new pavement management plan came out recently, right?
Um, it is due to come out. They've been a little day delayed because of a COVID nineteen crisis going on. So we should be getting that, um, I just spoke to them last week and they were just finalizing it, so we should be seeing that very soon. And yes, we will use that as a tool to identify other roads that could be done and use of this money, so. Which should be coming in just in time um to potentially add additional roads that would be good targets.
Okay, would would it be possible, is is that a, is at least a summary of that possible to be emailed to all of us?
I I don't have anything to provide you yet. They're just.
Well, when it, when it, when it comes, I don't.
When it comes out, you will definitely get information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steve's?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
And Councilor Katrona?
Yes.
Thank you unanimous of all present. Item thirty-four votes to transfer sixty-four thousand three hundred eighty dollars and eighty-three cents from Project Number Six Three Nine Six Zero Town Hall. Night stairs repairs to Project Number Six Four Seven Two Zero F Y eighteen Town Hall Rear Handicapped Entrance. Combine, to combine funds to complete repairs to Town Hall Stairs and Handicapped Entrance. Is there a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Um. Do you wanna describe this, I guess?
Sure, um. Basically, um. We we have two accounts that are basically for the same purpose and instead of having the two accounts and. Having it mu- be more difficult for Karen and myself and everyone to track, we are proposing to. Combine them into one account for ease of tracking and ease of knowing how much money we have. Um, to com- accomplish this task. As was spoken about earlier tonight, we do have a temporary pair that's going to be happening on that's um walkway. We are actually getting a piece of steel that we can put over top of the. Sorry, my cat decided that she wanted to come in front of the camera almost, but um over top of that hole, so that money will be coming from. One of these accounts also, but this will be the, for the major project to repair that. Um, at this point, I will be asking, Matt will start to be drafting the um. RFP for the engineering and architectural design for this. This is going to have encompassed the removal of the oil tank. Um, the redo of those stairs, we know uh of that ramp, we know that underneath that ramp is a void, it's a hollow ramp. So we'll be looking at the best way to redo that and address some of the other issues in that area to make it. Um, safe and accessible for years to come and also address the issue of the oil tank.
Thank you. Uh, any other question? Karen, Karen, do you have a a total of what that would be, that whole project? I was just trying to look at it real quick. What what would that make that whole project total?
Let me just look quickly. Let me see, sixty-four, seven, twenty.
I'm trying to fit in front of it real quick on the sheet.
There's thirty-five thousand and six dollars in the other account.
In the town hall stairs?
Zero, zero, six. Plus. And the Town Hall Rear Handicapped Entrance.
Okay.
And then add it to the sixty-four, three, eighty, eighty-three, so ninety-nine, three, eighty-six.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? Anything further? Last call. All right, roll call.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steve's?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Katrona?
Yes.
And Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirty-five votes to transfer twenty-one thousand from Project Number Six Three Eight Zero Zero. F Y sixteen DPW Roof Repairs. Dated six June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. To Project Number Six Four Five Eight Zero F Y eighteen Franklin Terrace Retaining Wall to fund additional project costs. Is there a motion?
So move.
So move, second.
Motion is second. Uh, Town Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is what we talked about earlier, uh the Franklin uh Terrace Retaining Wall. Uh, this is to meet the lowest bid, uh went a little over the budget we had required, so Heather's doing this transfer. So we can finally get that program, that project moving and get it done.
Thank you. Any questions? For Heather? Questions?
Councilor Nash?
Oh, Councilor Nash, did you have a question? I didn't see your hand go up. Did you have a question?
Thank you, just really quickly in relation to the uh defeat account fiscal year sixteen DPW roof repairs. I understand from the transfer request paperwork that temporary patches were made, but Heather. How long until you can get back to making permanent repairs so that this doesn't escalate?
Um, through you, Mr. Chairman. So.
Yes.
We have been monitoring that roof and um. Some of the issues that we have with it, we still do have some issues with that roof, um not gonna lie to you. But they're much bigger than the twenty-one thousand dollars that we had available, so we wouldn't have been able to address it with the available funds. This will have to be a capital item in the future to really address uh permanent repairs on parts of that roof. Um, some of the roof was repaired when it was purchased and rehabbed and other parts of it weren't. So we have a mishmash of of roofing materials up there. And uh we are seeing issues at seams and issues at different locations, so they will have to be addressed in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilor Manna?
No.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Steve's?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Katrona?
No.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
And Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Item thirty-six votes to transfer one hundred thirteen thousand sixty-three dollars and fifty-four cents from the fall capital account balances. To the stabilization fund. Count number six four four five zero, police bulletproof vest in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Six four four nine zero, rail trail riverbank erosion project in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred dollars. Sixty-four thousand, uh, count number six four four one zero, repairs to Capilla on Henry Street Parks, hundred fifty dollars and eighty-one cents. Six four zero one zero, police parking lot paving, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Six four five five zero, F Y eighteen improved handicapped access to a park, ten thousand dollars. Six four seven one zero, F Y eighteen town branded signage dated January eighth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty dollars and forty-six cents. Six four seven nine zero, library security cameras dated June fourth, two thousand eighteen, fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Six four eight four zero, DPW fuel system upgrades, June fourth, two thousand eighteen, one hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents. Six four four seven zero, Town Hall repairs and improvements, June sixth, two thousand sixteen, fifteen thousand dollars. Six four five one zero, library repairs and improvements dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, nineteen thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Six four six eight zero, F Y two thousand eighteen airport windows heat and air units, five thousand nine hundred dollars. Six four eight one zero, police facilities improvements, June fourth, two thousand eighteen, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Six-four-eight-one-zero Police Facilities Improvements, June fourth, two thousand eighteen, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion a second? Discussion, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone, uh, we, we had a lot of conversation about all of these items in one of our last meetings. The goal here is to add the hundred and thirteen oh sixty-three fifty-four back to our stabilization account. Again, this week, we talked about this and the money that we moved from free cash into the stabilization fund to build up that account in case we do have revenue loss. Um, we met with all the department heads, uh, myself and the finance director to talk about all of these specific projects. We believe that, uh, the money is either the project is at its end, already been done using some other funds or not a high priority at this time. So we, uh, myself and the finance director are recommending that all of this money be put into stabilization. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Any discussion? The only question I have, Karen, what would that bring our stabilization fund balance up to? Oh, sorry. Uh, I'll ask that question. I'll go back to Council Adams, but, uh, what would that bring that stabilization fund up to?
Four million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Um, actually, that was the question I was gonna ask. Um, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You're, you're too bright in there. I can't see your hand go up. Uh, a- any further discussion? Anything further? I really despise this Brady Bunch thing. It's, I, I can't wait for the day to come back to a regular dais, let me tell you. Um, saying none, roll call.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catriona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Vaughn?
Yes.
And Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item thirty-seven votes to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from project number six-four-five-one-five-zero F Y two thousand and sixteen demolition of buildings, June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, to project number six-four-zero-three-zero Animal Control Kennel to fund additional project costs. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion a second, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Uh, this original hundred thousand dollars was originally slated to come from free cash. We recommended not to do that thinking that this project might be put off a year, uh, because of COVID nineteen and the school situation. Uh, we met with the Superintendent Baypath. He, uh, made it very clear with, to me and the chairman that he believes the school system can go forward with this project. I think we all agree uh, that this is an important project for the town. Uh, too many of our animals are being kept in the Oxford Shelter. Uh, this money, uh, we, we talked about the demolition of building money, uh, this being a good use for, we did the transfer from there. Uh, I think we're all looking forward to seeing, uh, that project move forward. And the chief tells me, uh, with this one hundred thousand dollars, we should have enough to finish the project. So this puts us in good shape to finalize it and all the money will be in place and, um, we're looking forward to starting.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question is, um, how, so how much is the total cost of this project roughly?
Uh, Chief Watson, do you have the total? I know we, we already, and Karen could tell us by how much money we put in the account, but I, I don't know the total off the top of my head. Chief, do you know the total off the top of your head? Otherwise, Karen, can you give us the total amount we put in that account?
Yeah, it, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, of around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I know if we weren't having Baypath do a majority of the work, this building, I, I was told with the, with the engineering company, uh, McClure, that this would be a four hundred fifty thousand dollar project. So I, I believe we have a hundred and thirty thousand now. And this, am I, if I corrected that, um, Ms. Hinois, and then another hundred thousand if it's voted tonight. And I'm certainly not a construction, uh, person. I don't pretend to be one, and I hope that this gets us to where we need to be. I don't anticipate that we'll need any more money, but I don't want to say that this will absolutely cover all the costs because I don't know what, what could come up, um, during the construction phase that Baypath will be starting soon as school returns. And I hope that is in September.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any questions of the chief, the town manager, or finance director? Counselor Marquetti?
Question. Could you tell me how much, uh, through, through the chairman to, uh, town manager, could you tell me how much is left in the demolition account?
Um, uh, I, I want to say it's around four hundred thousand, but Karen, do you have a more accurate number? I thi- I think we are close to five. We're taking a hundred, so we're close to four. We already have a little over two hundred and something thousand dollars of projects slated. So there's extra money in there, but if the finance director can give me a little bit more clarified number, I appreciate it. Ms. Hinois?
Sure, if I can, um, between all of the accounts for the demo, there's five hundred and twenty-nine thousand that's available. So if we take the hundred thousand out of it, there'll still be over four hundred thousand available for demolition work.
So if I could continue, um, I know many of the councilors have, 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 uh, made it, uh, no, uh, made it their opinion that we should take the demolition money and either put it into stabilization or put it towards the roads. So why don't we do that? I mean, I'm, I'm in support of that. Let's take the demolition money. Take the, the rest of it, put it into, uh, either stabilization. I'd like to see it go towards the roads myself, but if you want to put it into stabilization, I would have no problem with that.
Okay, just as part of it. No, uh, I didn't mean to cut you off, Counselor Marquetti, just so we know, cause, uh, out of that project, count, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss, go on this project, not the total demolition account. Out of this, uh, demolition specific account that we would be talking about tonight, your point is well taken. We would need that to come to another agenda item on another day because we didn't anticipate it. Out of this account specifically that we're talking about this evening, uh, there is one hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-two cents of which would transfer a hundred thousand. So all that we would be able to discuss this evening based on that would be the forty-six thousand nine thirty fifty-two that's left in that specific account. And your topic may be, uh, appropriate for another meeting, but, uh, I do understand your sentiment, just as a point of clarification.
Okay, we wouldn't be able to add an agenda item or?
Uh, not, not if we were going to discuss the total demolition of buildings account. Uh, we certainly could do that. We could certainly do that in another meeting, though I would gladly entertain just a further discussion on that if you wish, but specific to the, tonight's agenda item would, just that would be the amount that we'd be able to discuss because it's specifically posted that way.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clearly, you could amend it to change and take the forty-six nine thirty fifty-two and add it to stabilization if you wanted to this evening because we gotta talk about that specific account.
I could do that right now?
Yes, because we're talking about that specific account.
Okay, I'll make an amendment that we take the, uh, how much was it? Four ninety-two?
Four, forty-six thousand nine thirty and fifty-two cents.
Forty-six thousand? Okay.
Yeah, you can amend it to be votes to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from project number six-four-one-five-zero F Y sixteen demolition of buildings to that project number Animal Control. And the remaining balance forty-six nine thirty fifty-two to stabilization.
So moved. That's my amendment.
Is there a second on that amendment? That Council Catriona? All right, is there any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, truthfully, Mr. Chairman, I've had a lot of discussion with, with, uh, Mr. Pelletier and his issue. I wouldn't, uh, truly be against the, the amendment. Um, you know, I, I think councilors over the past number of years have been very supportive of, of putting money into that demolition building and trying to take down some of these buildings that are destroying the image of the town, uh, in terms of just being a nuisance, being a public safety hazard, uh, lowering the property values around them. Um, the town council has been extremely supportive when we needed of adding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at a pop to these accounts. So I really, I truthfully, I don't have any real concern with the amendment. It's in stabilization. If you guys in the future feel you want to give it back or move it for lost revenues or whatever, I have no objection to this particular amendment.
Thanks, Counselor Steves?
Um, I personally would be much more in favor of it if we were actually throw it back to the roads, as, uh, Counselor Marquetti initially mentioned. Um, because we do have so many, so many road uses, so many road issues that need to be addressed. And I mean, we did just put two hundred grand into it, so we've got the, all of that extra funding there and the other forty some, something thousand might help a little bit. Um, I don't know exactly how far we'd go. I'm not a real guy, but, um, I think it's something that, uh, we can keep building that funds and that's something that everybody uses, everybody sees. Everybody knows. I mean, granted, granted, people see the, the derelict buildings as well. And I think, uh, to, to count to, uh, the town manager's point a second ago, yeah, we did put money into those funds repeatedly and we haven't seen a lot coming, getting done with that money. Some, yes, we're knocking some buildings down, but not nearly to the amount of funds that we've put there. And I know, I know that Andy has several that are in the pipeline. And we, and even if we do take this money out of that account, we'll still have enough money to cover those that are in the pipeline. Um, so I'm certainly in favor of making sure we get rid of, get rid of the, the derelict buildings. I'm in favor of that too. This is, there's a whole bunch of issues that, I wish we had several million dollars to play with to, to do some of these, all of the various things that need to get done in this town.
Thank you, Counselor Steves. Counselor Adams?
Yeah, just, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I'd like to, if you don't mind, through either to Town Manager or Andy himself and listen to what they have to say about pulling that money out. And then second, it'd be to Heather. Is she capable, you know, I'd love to be able to throw all this money at, at her as well at the same time, uh, for these roads, but is she capable next year of doing, doing some of this work? So I, I know we ran into that problem where we had some extra money last year. We wanted to give it to, uh, to find out there was no capability of completing that work, uh, spending that money. So I kind of just want to hear their points of view on this one. Or a big opinion.
Okay, I'll go first to, uh, Mr. Pelletier.
Good evening. Um, thanks for inviting me to join this conversation. Um, I have not torn down that many buildings in town because as I promised the council, when I first took over the position, um, I believe it was four years ago, I would exhaust every possible venue to put it back on the owner. I have a problem spending public money on private problems. Um, unfortunately, some of these blighted buildings become public problems. So in the four years that I've run the building, combined building and health departments, we've taken on no less than twenty buildings. Um, you'll know some of them like two thirty, I think it's two thirty-seven South Street, which is on the corner of South and Denison. Um, there was a building that we issued orders on. We tracked it. We chased it. We, we beat up on the owners. Don't want to say we beat up on the owners. We challenged the owners. And, um, if you look at two thirty-seven South right now, it's, it's back on the tax dollars. It's, we, we chose to push that one in a different direction. Um, we took down two buildings last year after we took on four buildings. We have a target on five buildings this year. Um, and there's some other huge projects, uh, one oh-three Charlton Street, but across the town insane money because of the proximity to the river and the size of the building. Um, that one is back out of a blighted condition. So I've got a target on four buildings, I mean, five buildings this year. I suspect of those five buildings, we'll probably have to take down up to three of them. And I am not averse to taking some of the monies out and, and moving it towards more advantageous projects that the town determines are, are better set for the town right now. Um, I would ask that the council consider keeping two hundred thousand dollars in the combined accounts as at three buildings at about anywhere from sixty to seventy thousand dollars apiece. We'll be pushing two hundred thousand if we push them. If I ever get the courts back, if we push them to, uh, demolition. Hopefully, we're not going to push them to demolition, but I think of the, of the ones that was targeted, there's going to be three that are going to demolition.
Thank you. Uh, Heather?
Sure. So, um, as I described what we plan to do for, um, budgeting of the money that we have this year, we're going to do a bid that will allow us to expand what we're doing. So adding additional funds will just increase the area that we can do. As to the question of how far does forty-six thousand get you? Um, I think I've studied it before. When you look at what was done a few years ago on Morris Street, that small section of patch that we do, what, that we did, which was just a small grind and overlay was over a hundred grand. So that's just a reference, uh, visual reference of what you get. So you're going to get about half of that if we do a grind and overlay. And if it's a complete reconstruction, it's going to be not even a quarter. So just to, it does help. I'm not going to say it doesn't help. It might be able to do, um, a small street, some of the small street, which I, um, Gardener Street, you know, it might give us the additional funds that will allow us to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, um, based on what I just heard there, I'd recommend at this point in time, if we're going to take that money out, I would, I would, uh, especially after the conversation earlier today, um, within the sustainability, uh, account, forty-six thousand dollars.
And stabilization, you mean?
Stabilization. You know what? Those two damn words. All right, appreciate it.
So, uh, I, I know stabilization, I mean, nothing's going to preclude the council if the town, if the, uh, this is my personal opinion. D P W Director comes to us and says, hey, these are the great rates that we can get. Nothing precludes the council from taking some money back out of stabilization or revisiting whatever accounts that are left, um, to, I mean, as, even if we take the whole one forty-six out of this, that's still going to leave almost three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in, uh, blighted buildings. So if we wanted to take something later on to, to roads or, or out of stabilization, um, I think that would be a prudent action, but that's my personal opinion. Uh, Counselor Marquetti?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna say the same thing as Counselor Adams. Let's just leave it in stabilization. Then, uh, maybe at the next meeting, we can, uh, decide on another additional two hundred thousand for roads from that account. That would be the way I'd like to go with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion on the amendment only? This is the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, can you please just, you can thank you through you, to you. Um, can you please clarify that the amendment is to add on the forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars fifty-two cents as a transfer from the demolition of buildings account to roads for the stabilization?
Yeah, so it would be to transfer the account one, uh, in the amount of one forty-six, one hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-two cents from project number six-four-one-five-zero F Y two thousand sixteen demolition of buildings, June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. One hundred thousand dollars to project number six-four-zero-three-zero Animal Control Kennel to fund additional project costs and the balance of forty-six thousand nine thirty fifty-two to the stabilization fund.
To stabilization.
Pretty clear?
Yeah, yeah, it's like they used to do with the old pork barrel approach. Um, thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Saying none, roll call.
Counselor Nash?
No.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catriona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Vaughn?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
And Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirty-eight. Votes to transfer two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents from the fallen water capital accounts to the water stabilization fund. Number six-three-three-five-zero Engineer of Denison Hill Water Tank.
We didn't, I was voting on the amendment. We haven't-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry. It's getting late, right? I apologize. I knew I had to do it too, and I, I forgot. All right, is there any further discussion on a motion as amended? Any further discussion or questions? As amended?
It is getting late.
Yes, all right. All right, roll call.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catriona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Vaughn?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
And Counselor Nash?
Yes.
I didn't hear a counsel, okay, thank you.
Was that a yes? Sorry.
Is that a yes or incredible? Sorry.
It is a yes.
All right. You didn't come out clear the first time around, Counselor. My apologies for not hearing that. Item thirty-eight votes to transfer two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents from the fallen water capital accounts to the water stabilization fund. Six-three-three-five-zero Engineer Denison Hill Water Tank, June twelfth, uh, June of two thousand twelve, I believe. Uh, two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents. Six-three-four-four-zero Upgrade Denison Hill Water Tank, forty-three thousand seven sixty. Six-three-six-nine-zero F Y sixteen install valves at Mass Ave Pump Station, twenty-five thousand. Six-three-seven-four-zero F Y sixteen Phase Two, estimated twenty-five hundred feet of eight-inch main airport, one hundred and fifty thousand. Is there a motion? Six three seven four zero FY sixteen phase two, estimated twenty five hundred feet of eight inch main airport, one hundred fifty thousand. Is there a motion? Second. A second. Motion is second, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, like the other accounts, we went through the capital accounts for the water department. And these are the projects that Heather recommended that we close out and move to the water stabilization fund. And if you have any questions, Heather can, can give you the answers, but we did go through each of the items at our last meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There are questions for Heather? I know we talked about it at length. Any questions for Heather on this? Last call for questions, comments. Seeing none, roll call?
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Catrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
And Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirty nine, vote to transfer nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars from project number six four four nine zero rail trail riverbank erosion to special appropriation account for fire department cans. Just screening, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, again, we had a, a great deal of conversation around this, as you remember. Uh, during budget, uh, I'm sorry, during union contract negotiations. I believe the negotiations, we either had six or eight, uh, employees were going to be treat, uh, screened for cancer. Uh, consult, count, town counselor. God, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. Town Councilor is off felt very strongly that we should do all the firemen at one time. This allows that to occur. We took it out of the leftover money for the riverboat, riverbank erosion project. Uh, I think this is a good thing for all of our firemen. That was something that town council felt very strongly about.
Okay, any questions, comments? Councilor Adams?
Just want to say thank you to Town Manager and all those that were involved in all this because this is pretty important to start off on some type of baseline for our firefighters. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, any comments? Last call? All right, seeing none, roll call?
Councilor Catrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
And Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item forty, vote to transfer thirty five thousand dollars from project number six four two four zero shot, pump station evaluation to project number six three seven six zero FY two thousand sixteen shot. PS Engineering and Solutions to combine this into one project account. Is there a motion?
Uh-huh.
There's a second? Discussion, questions? I know we discussed this during the capital review. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Was it?
I'm sorry, period.
Yeah, I hear some feedback. I don't know if it's from me, but.
Yeah, go ahead. You're there now.
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
And Councilor Catrona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item forty one, vote to reallocate ten thousand dollars from project number six four eight three zero resurface Henry Street Courts and Equipment Upgrades. Resurface Henry Street Courts and up, Equipment Upgrades for Handball Court Upgrades at Henry Street Park. Is there a motion? There a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we had about fourteen thousand dollars left uh, from redoing the basketball court. Town Council at the time, it gave me the ability to use it. The remaining balance for any other kinds of playground, any other kind of playground equipment we needed to park. Um, the issue of the handball court, uh, as you remember, uh, we worked with the handball court, handball association to build that racket ball or handball court. And the question there was, we wanted to see if Southridge residents would really use it or not. Uh, I think we had great interest in a lot of people, both young kids and some older adults. Uh, use the court. I know Councilor Nash and I forget another counselor went over there and participated with that court. Um, the handball association has come back asking for us to improve that court, to pave it and put fencing around it, uh, to have a more focused approach and make it regulation and and, uh, I thought it was, it was a good project to move forward with with the remaining money. Um, there are other things, they have four thousand dollars balance, we'd like to, I, I don't know if you've been there, but Henry Street Park, the picnic tables and stuff are old metal tables that are completely worn out. So we'll use the balance for that. Uh, I asked the handball association to give me an estimate of what it would cost to do the work to get the handball court to where we wanted to. If council approves this, Heather and I will work together to get, you know, actual quotes, um, from companies to actually do this work. Obviously, it's a small job, so we'll get the quotes. It does have to have, uh, prevailing wage because it's actually a construction project. That ten grand will be close, we'll scale whatever the project is and meet that ten grand amount, uh, but you know, if, if, again, if council wants to support this, we'll do the work, uh, to get the handball court, uh, significantly improved. If not, we can just leave the money there and use it for other park improvements, but based upon the usage, based upon the excitement around the handball court. Uh, we thought that this would be a good use for the funds. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the town manager. Um, I saw some emails, you know, a few months back on this and since, um, I haven't seen any recently. Um, but is, is this the, um, the emails that I am referring to were basically was in control of the whole thing. And I, I didn't like that idea. And, um, that's what my concern is about this now is like we're having one small group in control of this whole thing, a public park. And then, that's my second thing is, I mean, parks aren't even open.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Parks aren't even open right now. So I, I think that, you know, when are they even going to open? And, um, you know, we, we can't even still have ten more people together. So I don't know if I can support this, to be honest with you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So first of all, the handball association is not in charge of anything. The handball association, after seeing the excitement at the park and the amount of people that got involved in the handball, uh, they came to me and said, geez, you know, we really should improve, uh, the handball court. And I said, well, I'm not a handball expert. Tell me what, you know, we would need to, to make the park or the handball court, uh, you know, be a decent quality and stuff. And they told me paving and fencing, and they got me some quotes for what the, the cost would be, just so that we could do this transfer. Obviously, uh, if, so the, so the, really the decision is up to Town Council, the power is in their hands to make this decision. Uh, the actual going out and getting actual bids is something that me and Heather would actually do if council wants to go down this path. Um, as the parks opening, uh, the state has a plan for opening up the parks. I don't expect it, frankly, that it's going to be that much longer. They've already authorized it with a whole bunch of regulations to open it to, to allow people to walk through the park and do certain things. Uh, I looked at those regulations, I sent them to Jared and, and Heather. The problem is it, you know, the regulations are so tough, you'd almost have to have somebody over there stand and monitor everything people do in those parks. We don't have the resources to do that. So we're going to wait a little while until we get a more thorough approach from the state that allows us to do more with the parks. Uh, Jared, I've asked Jared to get involved with this. I know he's here and he's been working, uh, with the handball association to look at this issue. Um, again, if, if council decides they don't want to go forward, that's up to council, we can use the money for other repairs of the park, but I think uh, the Henry Street Park is, is, it really is a heavily used park. We need to keep making repairs there. It's, it's used by that neighborhood extensively. So if we don't do that, I'm going to still keep forward to do the gradual improvements. As you know, we've did the basketball courts. We've upgraded the playgrounds. We got the new playground coming in over the next couple of weeks. It'll be the brand new playground in there. Well, so, you know, we're kind of making slow, steady improvements to that park. I think the handball court is a good thing. It seems popular. I, I think Councilor Nash may comment more on it because he was very involved in, in all of that, um. But again, you know, I, I'm not going to take it, you know, if council doesn't want to move in this direction, it's not going to come to me. I just think anything we can do to benefit the kids is a good thing.
So if I can follow up, Mr. Chair, through you.
All right, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for like reigniting my memory. It was the quotes. She, the, the person in charge of the handball association got you all a quote. And it's not up to her to get the quotes for the town. So it took, it, it was to me, all those emails back and forth, it was like she, you, you asked her to go out and do this, or there was some conversation and you were involved in that. And then he told her to keep all the town councilors off the email, which I found very, you know, yeah, I don't like that too much. So it, it was more or less, you know, somebody basically telling us what we need to be doing with our park. And that's what I didn't like, and I didn't like you asking her to go out and get all the quotes. And, yeah, so I'm not, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I don't want to get in a debate with you. This is what I remember. And those are those emails, and as soon as I can get my email working again, I'll go back and find those emails. Um, but, yeah, you did, you did say to keep all of us town councilors off the emails that she was only supposed to go back and forth with you on this. So, yeah, you know, thank you.
Please, Mr. Chairman, I'm not arguing with Councilman either because frankly, I agree with her. Um, the emails were going back and forth. Me, I, truthfully, I've never built a, a handball court and Heather hasn't built a handball court. Uh, these are people who build handball courts over the place. So we asked them to give, you know, tell us what they needed and give us an idea of what it costs. And then we would decide with council if we wanted to move forward or not. Um, but again, you know, getting some estimates of cost is a lot different than uh, what the regular procurement process of actually going out and getting bids, that's something we would do, but I do understand, and she's absolutely correct, that the emails are going back and forth.
That's not what the email said. So I'm just going to put that out there. That's not what the email said.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I remember, uh, just as a town manager, I know Councilor Nash and Council Daniel, uh, myself, back and forth with, uh, this handball court situation. I know this past year, we met with Nancy and her husband and, and their son, um, discussed it and they came up with these ideas of, um, of the fencing and why they needed the fencing. Um, a couple of questions to the town manager with this, these are just quotes. Do you think this ten thousand dollars is sufficient enough to have a prevailing wage and you go out the biz? Is it going to be enough for these two areas?
So, so that frankly, Councilor Adams, that's a good question because me and Heather were talking about that. And Heather's concern is that it might be a little bit short, uh, knowing the cost of paving. The conversation, and, and Heather can chime in. Heather was concerned because it's a very small paving job. A lot of companies don't want to do that small of a project. So she's a little bit concerned about the, if the ten grand will make it or not. Uh, my kind of attitude is that, you know, we're going to give them ten grand towards this project and we're going to use it the best way we can to, to pave it as good as possible and to do whatever fencing we can. Uh, you could authorize, I thought about saying, you know, authorize the whole remaining balance of fourteen thousand dollars for this project, but truthfully, I'd really like to change those picnic tables. If you see the picnic tables over there, hoping we get a couple of grand for that. So I'd like to do everything we can to keep it within ten grand and work with Heather on that. And use that couple of grand left to get picnic tables. I just think it's embarrassing when you look at the picnic tables over there and see them off rust and stuff. And children shouldn't have to sit at them. So that, that's why I don't want to use the full fourteen grand for, for that purpose. And Heather can elaborate. She, we did have that conversation.
Well, and, 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 and I got that. And I don't, um, just to follow up with the town manager on that is, is why not ask for the entire fourteen thousand dollars? That way you don't have to come back to us if it's eleven thousand or ten thousand or one dollar. You know, why not just do that? Um, now, then if it's, it comes up shorter than fourteen thousand, maybe we reallocate that up on those funds, uh, for the picnic tables.
And, and Councilor Adams, I'm okay with that. If you just keep the continued authority that whatever the remaining balances can be used for the others of, um, other repairs at the park, I'm okay with that. You know, because you're right, it could be a hundred, two hundred bucks. I would, you know, we're going to work with Heather to, to do whatever we had to make it come in for ten grand, but I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to that kind of amendment if you wanted to do it.
And, uh, and the, uh, the other thing I had was, um, you know, sitting down talking to them, obviously, uh, we went out there and watched them play and just saw the amount of use on the handball courts, and it wasn't even during the tournament times. So the kids were out there and adult, young adults are playing on it all the time. So it, it definitely is being used. Um, I know they wanted, I think it was cement, cement walls and, and some other things that just too much money uh, for us to afford at this point in time, but I'm in agreement with, uh, at least my perspective. We need to get back to that, 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 uh, that park because it is being used. Capillo all the way down to Henry is being constantly used by young kids and young adults down there. So I, I'm in favor of this. The one thing I would look at is on this motion, it says about equipment upgrades instead of fencing. So, um, it's about maybe, maybe we need to amend that to fencing portion. So that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrods? Karen?
Yes, thank you. Um, I know the number of the fourteen thousand has been going out there, but that actually is not the amount that's in the account. It's twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty four dollars and seven cents in there. So I just want to make sure that we have the right number.
How much was that, Karen? My, my computer froze a little bit. What was it, twelve?
Twelve thousand nine fifty four oh seven.
Heather, did you have something to add?
No, I just, I just want to confirm that I have had conversations with Ron regarding um, concerns about whether there's enough money to do all the items that they're looking to. Uh, fencing, paving, um, i- if you do it around your house, it's a lot cheaper than when you get a, a town prevailing wage and both of those would have to be prevailing wage. Both of them aren't very big jobs. It, it starts to lend itself to, um, they don't want to mobilize for that type of work, for that small of a job or, you know, having to do prevailing wage and everything else associated with it.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Jared is, is on this call. Last time when, when we worked with the, um, handball association, they put up a little money. They're not a wealthy organization. But they did put up a little bit of money to help build that original court. And I don't know if perhaps they would be willing to add a little bit of money to this as well. Uh, but in the past, they have done that. Uh, Jared, I don't know, Jared's had conversations with, with her about it, but maybe we can ask Jared to give a little more information.
Mr. Solotar?
Uh, to my knowledge at this time, they have not offered it, uh, specifically any money, but I do know that they are both, uh, the husband and wife are both very passionate about this project. So, uh, it is my understanding that they may be, uh, inclined to do so.
Thank you. Councilor Adams, did you have something else?
Is this appropriate? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this appropriate time to amend the, the motion?
If you'd like to, yeah.
Attempt to amend, yeah, but, um, bring him in to vote to mend his motion to they vote to reallocate twelve thousand nine hundred fifty four dollars and seven cents for project sixty four eight three zero resurface Henry Street Courts and Equipment Upgrades for Handball Court Upgrade to Henry Street Park.
So that, was there a second? I'm sorry.
Second, yes.
Yeah. Karen, is that equipment upgrades to handball court upgrades, right? Not for handball upgrades, right? Or is it, or is that the appropriate, is that for?
Well, yes, that, the, the way it's written, it would just stay in that account, in that specific amount would be used for the handball court upgrades.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the amendment to allocate, reallocate the entire balance? Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, just to be clear, I want to make sure that if there's a remaining balance, I can use it to do things like pick up to the picnic table the way you worded it, Councilor Adams.
Yeah, if you need me to amend it again, that's the statement.
Make sure it's clear that if there's remaining money, I can use it to do the picnic tables or others, other fix-it projects at the park.
Well, i- i- is, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
This is Karen, then this amount of money would stay in that account. So it's still allocated for Henry Street Park, correct? Or Henry Street Courts and Equipment Upgrades Account.
Well, the way this is worded now, the twelve thousand nine fifty four oh seven would have to be used for the handball. So I would just add maybe at the end with any. for the handball. So I would just add maybe at the end, with any remaining balance to be used for other equipment upgrades.
So could I just ask a question? I guess, I don't know if it's, I get what we're trying to do. How about we say, hey, Heather, go out and get some quotes and come back to us and say, this is how much it's gonna cost? Because this could go 15, 20,000. We don't even know how much is quotes. It doesn't cost us anything to get quotes, right, Heather? We say, hey, this is, let's quote it and figure out how much it's gonna cost us. And then come back to the council and say, hey, we want to reallocate this money. I think that would be the smarter approach than opposed to, hey, let's just transfer the money and then find out we can't even do it because it's so cost prohibitive. And oh, okay, all we can do is tables and and some other minor repairs. I mean, to me, that that would make sense. But I know we're talking about the amendment, but that's to me. Usually we have some quotes and say, this is what I want to do. Can we do it? But am I, am I wrong, Heather, on that?
No, it's it's gonna be a little time consuming to put those together. And quite frankly, right now I have other priorities, but I can definitely do that.
So I guess, all right, if you could clarify that. So what's the difference if we say, go out and get some quotes and come back? Or we just vote and it sits there anyway until you have time to do it? I mean, what's the rush in doing this right now?
No rush for me. But I I assume the town manager would probably be able to, based on what he has, maybe start drafting some requests for quotes so that my department can concentrate on putting the pavement bid out, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, just through you, Ms. Chairman. Often, we actually put, we usually put money into an account and then go out for quotes. That's usually the way that we do these projects. I'd like to get this thing moving as quickly as possible. Again, these are requests for quotes. They they don't go through the big procurement process, although they are prevailing wage. Because they're, you know, like less than $15,000. I'd like to move as quick as possible, but I'm not gonna be totally against the concept of waiting and doing the quotes. But we'd like to get this done, you know, obviously, you know, the coronavirus has slowed down the open the parks. I would like to get it in for this summer so people can use it. But I, you know, I can only tell you that when Nancy went out to get those estimates, she, the estimates we got, I asked her and I kept saying, make sure you get estimates with prevailing wage going in. And the company she gave us estimates said they can do the work at those prices. I know Heather's skeptical and she may be right. But the whole purpose of the quotes was to see if the companies could do that. And and Sam Hicks paving says that they can. And and upright fencing, they're saying they can do it. And I'd like to try to do it within the $12,954 if we can. And I think we can.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the motion was to to reallocate. Was there further amendment to your motion? Counselor Adams? Just confused.
No.
Counselor Manna, this is on the amendment? Go ahead.
It's just a follow up to what the town manager said. When Nancy went out to get the quotes, and that's the whole issue I have. Make sure you get prevailing wage. You can do it like, so, yeah, no, I I can't support this. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to, that last wording of Karen's, is that in the amendment or not in the amendment? That it can be used for other things? David, you didn't say it, but Karen added that wording. I just want to know what the final amendment is.
What'd you say, Karen, and other?
I have it if you want me to read that.
Yep, go ahead, Mary.
With any remaining balance to be used for other equipment upgrades. The end of that.
Okay.
We're gonna vote on that amendment to the amendment?
Well, just offer it as a friendly amendment. Whoever second it, will you take, accept that as an amendment?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay. Karen?
Guess I'm, I'm just trying to think of a, an easier way to do it. I wonder if we could just say to maybe to use the balance of the $12,954.07 in the account to include handball court upgrades at Henry Street Park. That way we can use it for equipment and we could use it for that, too.
I think it's results in the same thing either way. So I don't.
Yeah. I I guess it does. I'm just, I'm just trying to make it easier to word, that's all. We can leave it as, it's fine.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on the amendment? Can you just, does everybody go with what we're voting on for the amendment? Okay, roll call?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
No.
Counselor Manna?
No.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Ms. Karen, is there any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Counselor Marquetti?
Just like to know, when is the park due to open? Because I might want to go down there and play handball someday.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure yet. The state hasn't set the actual date for having a a park that's fully active open yet. As I said earlier, you know, they can open it just for people to walk through and stuff, but I would not have the capacity to have staff down there seeing if people are doing things right or not. So I don't know, I don't think the governor's given us an exact date yet as to when you can have the park open to most of its capacity. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'll weigh in really quickly. I think it's been said on the the main motion here, as amended, of course. But I do remain remember for the last couple of years being down at Henry Street and spending some good time, learning the game of handball, see a lot of different folks come out and play, single adults that had to walk quite a distance. They weren't just from the Henry Street or street area were down there. Saw people of all ages and I went back several times on my own. And even if people weren't playing handball, there were kids down there throwing a tennis ball, trying to learn how to play baseball, perhaps. There would be a need for railings or fencing, of course, because middle of our handball games, people were riding their bikes across because they had no respect. But I definitely think this is a wise investment to do something, especially for the youth of this community. While times are tight and we're putting money into stabilization, I think this is a small price to pay to continue some improvements in that particular part of town at that park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Karen, none? Roll call?
Counselor Catrona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
No.
Counselor Manna?
No.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Austin, Carrie's, all business, the keeping of pets by law. Hopefully, we can get this into a regular meeting in person at some point. Counselors forum. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know sometimes I have a tendency to ramble. It's 10:20 at night. I have a couple of things, but I'm gonna hold them for our next meeting and just remind everyone if they haven't already voted by mail, to make every effort to vote tomorrow. Your voice counts. Appreciate the conversations that we've had tonight on several different agenda items and topics that were of absolute importance in this community. So thanks, everyone, for making it a productive evening, even when we disagree. Have a great night.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick things. One is that we did, and we kind of talked about them both already. And one is that if you are concerned about some of the stuff that's going on, you can certainly go to McManfield tomorrow at two and have your voice be heard, but keep it peaceful and, you know, be civil. And the other thing is to dovetail off of what Counselor Nash just said. Remember, the election, the election today is tomorrow. If you have already voted, thank you very much, whether you supported me or not. Because participating is important. And the polls will be open for the regular hours tomorrow. Just remember to wear your, wear your mask and you probably should try to bring a pen if you can. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being repetitive, it's gonna be a nice day tomorrow. Please get out and vote. It's important. The local elections are very important. The other thing, and I'm not gonna spend too much time on it tonight, but I will certainly reserve comment for our next meeting. But Counselor Manna touched on something much earlier this evening. And that's being small business friendly in this town. And I think it's really something that we need to focus on. And we we just need some cooperation from our different town departments. That's all I have this evening, but I certainly will bring that back at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you. Just like to encourage everybody to vote tomorrow. If they haven't already voted, please, please go out tomorrow and vote. People want to protest. The most important protest you can make is to go and vote. If you want to change, you have to vote. So please vote and wear a mask. And I think they're gonna be handing out pencils tomorrow. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
Through you, did it on what Counsel Marquetti and all the other ones, all the other councillors stated about tomorrow. Also, I just wanted to thank Karen for providing the Capitol Projects Updates, though actually, really good tool for us to keep an eye on where what projects are happening and where we're shortfalling. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do have a few things. Yes, get out and vote tomorrow if you didn't vote by mail, or if you didn't do an absentee ballot or whatever, and wear your mask. It's not gonna be like that forever. Even if you're nervous, bring hand sanitizer, right? So anyways, I just want to touch on a couple of things. So with everything that's going on, I am really like, I'm very anxious. I don't know how everybody else feels, but these last couple of weeks have been very anxious for me. We're we're getting through a pandemic. And now we have America burning. And yes, I will say, America is burning because I've been watching it burn for the last two weeks. I support anybody's right to protest in their cause, whether I believe in it or not, because it's their right under the First Amendment to peaceably protest. When it starts to turn into violence and riots and and disrupt disrupting even traffic and and putting yourself in harm's way and putting other people in harm's way, then it's not your right to do that. And you need to stop. And I I I I don't agree with what's going on, the new trend. And I'm just gonna put this out there. If any of my representatives in the state of Massachusetts get on the defund the the police bandwagon, you won't ever have my support. I am in 100% support of 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 keeping our police department fully staffed. I'll go back to 2008 when a crack house appeared on my street, Maple Street. And let me tell you, if we didn't have a police department, my neighborhood would have went right down the tubes. And I thank God we had our police department, and that's what got me involved. And they put their self their selves in harm's way for us. Yeah, we can, we can put money into social services and stuff, but you can't have a social worker going into a home with this domestic violence. You know, oh, you know, trying to calm down the person who's beaten up the wife or the girlfriend, or you know, somebody that has a gun to their head or or whatever. They're very dangerous situations in domestic violence. You can't have social services going in and talking down the the armed robber who's got the gun or the knife up to the person's belly. You know, I mean, we need our police department. Back in 2013, when I first got elected to council, we were given this book right here. It's the audit. The audit was done when I was just a citizen member on PPP. Back in 2013, the audit said, on page 40, if you council this out, this number five, the town must adequately provide the police department with the necessary funding to carry out its mission. This includes additional officers, and we recommend that the town will toward the complement of 40 sworn police officers, including the chief's position, while we're still down two. And I will fight every day until my last day, June 30th, for those other two police officers. So there's something to consider there. And, yeah, I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Daye?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank the chief for his fine work in helping organize the protest for tomorrow. I'm sure that'll be a good event and a safe event. And I'd like to remind everyone that that people are protesting for reasons that they have. And that it's incumbent upon us to listen to what it is that they're protesting about. We need to understand what it is that that their concerns are. And if they need to be acted upon, then act upon them. People don't protest for no reason. They protest with a reason. I do hope it's a safe protest. And I implore people to keep that in mind as they do protest tomorrow. I'd like to encourage everyone to get out and vote if they haven't already voted. I know that there's quite a number of people that voted early. And that speaks well to people's citizenship, their desire to be involved. But if for whatever reason they're not able to vote by mail or absentee, then don't forget tomorrow. It's the the center is open for a long time, 12 or 13 hours. That gives you plenty of time to get down there and to cash your ballot. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have. The next regularly scheduled meeting is scheduled for June 29th, I believe, at 7:00 PM, and it'll be a remote meeting.
I'm hoping that we, right now, we say that it's remotely. Hopefully, we can get some guidance that that will change the, it would be nice to be able to meet in person for our outgoing councillors to wish them well. And hopefully, we can get back to some normal public activities as well. Does anything further? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
Second. Motion is second. Roll call?
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. I wish everybody a safe day tomorrow and get out and vote. Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good luck tomorrow.